We'll call to order the regular meeting of Tuesday, July 15, 2022. We'll call -- can you hear this, Mike?
No.
Can you hear me now?
No.
I T, I have a problem.
No, they can hear you.
All right, can you hear me now?
They got it, they're good.
Okay. We'll call to order the meeting of Tuesday, July 5, 2022. If everyone would please rise, we'll do the invocation and the pledge allegiance.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, we bow our heads this day to pause from our busy lives to say thank you. If you can hear my voice, you are blessed to live in a community, in a county, in a country that is the envy of all. Father, as we have been so very blessed, may we in turn offer encouragement, hope, joy, and love to others, for it is true that a blessing is not meant to be kept but to be shared. Father, we pray as we deliberate that you would grant wisdom and guidance to our commissioners and all those that would participate in these proceedings tonight. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Folks, I would remind everyone, please turn your cellphones off into the mute or vibrate. That would help us expedite. We have a lot on the agenda tonight. At this point, I'd like to just waver a little bit and go to, what we're going to do is we're going to go to the erosion district. It shouldn't take long, and then we'll get back to the regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we'd like to come to order St. Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is general public comment. Seeing no one, there are no minutes. Is there any question on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. There's no regular agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll return back to the regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the B O C C regular meeting of June 7th and the informal meeting of June 7, 2022.
Move approval.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, tonight, we have a few proclamations.
Mr. Chair, can we go to public comment first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. We have public comment. Anything that's excluding which is on the public agenda for this evening, if anyone would like to speak, now would be your opportunity, except for things that are on the agenda.
Public hearing.
It's on the public hearing, yes. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Proclamations. Our first proclamation this evening will be Resolution 22-106 proclaiming July 20, 2022 as Gleoblastoma Awareness Day in St. Lucie County, Florida. Tonight, this will be accepted by Stephanie West, the CEO and founder of Brain Cancer Foundation of the Treasure Coast, and Alice Bianco Blanco, and she's the Vice President of the Media Relations.
A resolution proclaiming July 20, 2022 as Gleoblastoma Awareness Day in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida has made the following determinations. Gleoblastoma, GBM, is the most common malignant brain tumor accounting for approximately half of all primary malignant brain tumors, the most aggressive, complex, difficult-to-treat, and deadly type of brain tumor that are known, and there is no known cure. Approximately 13,460 new cases will be diagnosed in the U.S. in 2022, and it is estimated that more than 10,000 individuals will succumb to GBM this year. GBM accounts for about 48% of all malignant brain tumors, and it is estimated that 1,840 people will be diagnosed with a malignant brain tumor in Florida this year. Of those 1,840 people, approximately 900 will be diagnosed with a gleoblastoma this year. The five-year survival rate for GBM patients is only 6.8%, and the median length of survival for these patients is only eight months. GBM is described as a disease that affects the essential self, as the treatment and removal of gleoblastoma presents significant challenges due to the fragile nature of the brain. Patients and caregivers play a critical role in furthering research for GBM. Although research advances may fuel the development of new treatment for GBM, challenging obstacles towards new treatment remain, and there are no screening or early detection methods. In 2020, the National Cancer Center established a Gleoblastoma Therapeutic Network, GTN, as part of a national infrastructure to enhance and support the discovery and development of GBM therapies available for multi-institutional GTN teams to drive therapeutic agents through preclinical studies and early-phase clinical trials, which are necessary to rapidly evaluate potential treatments to advance towards cures and improve quality of life. In 2021, the World Health Organization reclassified brain tumors and made significant changes to the molecular characteristics of GBM diagnosis, necessitating critical biomarker tests for patients suspected of having a possible gleoblastoma. Although GBM was first described in medical and scientific literature in the 1920s, and despite its devastating prognosis, only four drugs and one medical device have been approved by the FDA to treat GBM. The mortality rates associated have changed little during the past 30 days, now 30 years. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, does hereby proclaim July 20, 2022 as Gleoblastoma Awareness Day in St. Lucie County, Florida, and honors the individuals who have lost their lives to GBM or are currently living with this deadly disease, who continue to demonstrate great determination, adaptability, and courage in their efforts to live their best life with this disease, and we pay tribute to those that are promoting awareness of GBMs such as BRAIN, bringing resources and information now. Cancer Foundation of the Treasure Coast, passed and duly adopted this 5th day of July 2022.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, and can we get the group that we have GBM survivors in the?
Sure, if you want to bring them up, sure.
If you could please come up, the GBM group, please.
After they speak, then we'll get a picture.
Okay, thank you.
We'd like to extend our appreciation to the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners for designating July 20, 2022 as Gleoblastoma Awareness Day, and for those that are here in support of gleoblastoma awareness. This year, July 20, is designated as Gleoblastoma Awareness Day. However, for those of us who have lost a loved one to gleoblastoma, or for those who are struggling with the disease currently, every day is Gleoblastoma Awareness Day. Gleoblastoma has been particularly prevalent in St. Lucie County, with more than 60 cases reported over the past nine years. Many lived about seven miles apart, majority over than five miles of each other. Some lived on the same street. In one case, two patients lived in the same house over a 20-year span. The majority are younger than the average gleoblastoma diagnosis age of 64. The proximity of these cases is alarming, and despite the county not having an elevated gleoblastoma rate, we believe an investigation into the cause is warranted. Gleoblastoma has taken the lives of too many in our community. We want people to know the names of those in our community we have lost. Every name, every number has a name, and every name matters. They were someone's son, daughter, mother, father, spouse, grandparent, cousin, friend, and colleague. We honor gleoblastoma survivors, whose stories inspire us with hope for the future. We also want to express the support for the families, friends, and caregivers of those individuals. Today, we are the voice for those who no longer have a voice. These are the names of some of those in our community we have lost. 21-month-old Gregory, 20-year-old Kyle, 33-year-old Lenny, 35-year-old Mark, my son-in-law, 43-year-old Joshua, 45-year-old Lacy, 45-year-old Robert, 46-year-old Duane, 48-year-old Bill, 49-year-old Mark, 50-year-old Mike, 52-year-old Kevin, 52-year-old Catherine, 55-year-old Virginia, 56-year-old Alberto, 56-year-old Bernadette, 58-year-old Kathy, 60-year-old Jean, 61-year-old Jim, 61-year-old Francine, 62-year-old Claudia-Luce, 65-year-old Bill, 73-year-old Don, and 83-year-old Marlene. You are not forgotten. You aspire us to continue to raise public awareness and seek answers. We hope you too will be a voice for gleoblastoma awareness. Collectively, we can help raise awareness and educate the community about this terrible disease impacting so many in our community. Thank you.
I also want to thank you guys for doing this. I definitely think that we need to come together as a community. The current two women that have GBM are in their early 40s. All of them have young children. It's just not normal, but this is a great first step, so thank you.
Appreciate you. Would you like to get a picture?
Yes, please.
Turn around. Ladies want to hold the proclamation, and then I'll just, is that yours? Which one?
This one's him.
Okay. Perfect.
Hold on, you have one coming from?
You can't see me. Peek around the shoulder. Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution Number 22-107 proclaiming July 16, 20 through the 24, 2022 as Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week in St. Lucie County, Florida. Tonight, this will be accepted by Tessa Roberts, who's the Senior Environmental and Community Outreach Coordinator for St. Lucie County.
A resolution proclaiming July 16 through 24, 2022 as Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. On Saturday, July 23, 2022, the Marine Industries Association of the Treasure Coast, in conjunction with the Florida Inland Navigation District, will conduct the 15th Annual Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup. This event will attract approximately 1,000 volunteers who will participate in cleaning up the waterways of Indian River, Martin, and St. Lucie Counties. 31 designated sites throughout the three counties will serve as a registration and disposal site for volunteers to work out of. Numerous waterfront homeowners associations have been recruited to clean up their own waterfronts. Since the beginning, over 95.5 tons of trash has been collected from approximately 125 miles of waterways, with an expectation of a significantly large amount to be collected this year with an increased volunteer effort. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, does hereby proclaim July 16 through 24, 2022 as Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week in St. Lucie County, Florida, and all citizens are encouraged to use this occasion to foster appreciation for the Treasure Coast waterways and assist in the cleanup efforts, passed and duly adopted this 5th day of July, 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd be happy to.
Good.
Thank you. Good evening. Just want to say thank you for proclaiming July 16 through the 24, the Waterway Cleanup Week. We at the Environmental Resources Department and the Oxbow Eco Center are really happy to be supporting the Marine Industries Association of the Treasure Coast and the Florida Inland Navigation District to bring the Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup to St. Lucie County for the 15th year. Since 2008, we've removed over 95 tons of trash from our waterways. We target waterways, 125 miles of waterways, from Hope Sound all the way to Sebastian. Here in St. Lucie County, in 2021, last year, we got 2.31 tons of trash out of our waterways with 443 volunteers, just in St. Lucie County, in addition to City of Port St. Lucie and City of Fort Pierce, with 46 and 180 volunteers respectively. Since 2008, the Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup has used 4,784 volunteers and gathered 36.8 tons of marine debris. So our St. Lucie County sites, for those of you who may be interested in being involved, include Fort Pierce Yacht Club, J.C. Park Boat Ramp, Manatees Center Boat Ramp at Morris Creek, Safe Harbor, Harbor Town, Smithsonian Marine Eco Center, Stan Blum Boat Ramp, C24 Canal Boat Ramp, River Park Marina, Veterans Park at River Gate, and the Oxbow Eco Center will be supporting the White City Park Boat Ramp area. So, thank you for the proclamation.
Before you run off, sorry, before you run off, the legislature has given counties an opportunity to review banning smoking on the beaches or cigarettes on the beaches. So I know that I've done every one of these, except for maybe one, and we have found that the cigarette butts are probably the number-one collected item. So counties around the state are looking at this. I was just on the east, west coast this past weekend, and most of the counties over there are moving in that direction simply because the sand has become the ashtray of Florida. So it would be nice to have those numbers when they come back. I know that you collect those numbers, given what you've just given us statistically, so.
That's wonderful. I appreciate that.
I don't know that the board's going to go that direction, but I just wanted to see what kind of numbers those are.
I'll be happy to provide that information for you.
Thanks.
Okay. Would you like to get a picture?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. He's the Public Safety Director for St. Lucie County, and he is going to be doing a presentation on the 2022 hurricane season preparedness. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, on the record, my name is Ron Guerrero. I'm the Public Safety Director for St. Lucie County. Joining me is the Emergency Operations Center Manager, Gustavo Bilches, and this is the 2022 Hurricane Season Preparedness. So every year, as we're aware, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, puts out a prediction of how many hurricanes or named storms are going to be out there for this year. They always, for the last couple of years, they have predicted an above-average season. This season, they have predicted about 14 to 21 named storms. Out of that, about six become a hurricane, and they're looking at about three major hurricanes. So that's their prediction this year. And the reason for that is the increased activity due to the climate factor, including La Niña, the warmer-than-average sea surface temperatures in the Atlantic Ocean and the Caribbean Sea, as well as the weaker tropical Atlantic trade winds and the enhanced West African monsoon. Some of our preparedness efforts that we have done here at the Emergency Operations Center for St. Lucie County is understanding that we're still dealing with COVID. We have increased our virtual meeting capabilities in the event that we do have to have a virtual activation, and this includes having multiple online video conferencing platforms such as WebEx, Zoom, and BlueJeans. We have replaced some of our laptops and monitors to ensure that we have the latest models and to ensure compatibility of our systems. We have also enhanced our Web E O C platform, which is our web-based emergency management information system used for communication, information sharing, and resource tracking. We have created 50 Go Kits for our emergency response teams that are basically rolling kits capable of being picked up and taken anywhere. Those kits include laptops, mobile hotspots, handheld radios, and other necessary gear that ensure connectivity from anywhere in the county. Additionally, we have hired two emergency management staff to assist the division in the training, exercises, and reimbursement from past disasters and recovery planning. Additionally, our staff have updated the Emergency Operations Center coordinating procedures to ensure that all the resources and staff within St. Lucie County are depicted appropriately. Additional preparedness efforts that we have taken here in St. Lucie County is we have added two additional weather stem stations. The stations provide real-time weather data, including temperature, wind speed, wind gusts, as well as forecast information, and includes live streaming cameras that the public can view that have been installed at our Emergency Operations Center, as well as the City of Fort Pierce Marina. Obviously, because of COVID, our public outreach and education engagements had reduced for the last two years. We have actually increased, starting to increase that again. We continue to work with the municipalities, as well as the community partners, in participating in various community events. So far, we've done the Juneteenth event. We're going to be doing one tomorrow, the Fourth Annual Unity in our Community in Fort Pierce, as well as the Hurricane Expo in the City of Port St. Lucie on July 9. Our county is also designated as a storm-ready county by the National Weather Service. This is a program designed to recognize communities that have reached a high-level severe weather preparedness, and in order to be considered a storm-ready community, you must have the following criteria. Establish a 24-hour local warning point and emergency operations center. Having multiple ways of receiving National Weather Service warnings. Creating a system to monitor local weather and river conditions. Having multiple ways of alerting our public. This is done through our Alert St. Lucie. Promoting public readiness through community seminars and presentations. Having trained spotters, which is done through training via sky warm training that is done jointly with the National Weather Service, and conducting periodic drills and exercises. Additionally, emergency management has started a continuity of operations, continuity of government refresh program with emphasis on cybersecurity awareness components with all the county departments and constitutional offices to update such plan and as well as develop the actual continuity of government annex. This will ensure that government continues to function in the event of an incident. Our comprehensive management, emergency management plan, which establishes the framework to ensure that St. Lucie County and its municipalities will be adequately prepared to deal with all hazards threatening the lives and property of St. Lucie County citizens, is currently being updated by the state. This plan allows for all state and FEMA funds to be provided countywide post-disaster. Emergency management is currently preparing for the community rating system audit, which will take place in September of 2022. When this is passed, residents living in incorporated St. Lucie County will continue to receive 20% discount from their flood insurance. The local mitigation strategy, which was adopted in August 2020, allows community partners to obtain FEMA mitigation funds post-disaster. Currently, over $5 million in FEMA mitigation funds are being implemented in St. Lucie County. Training exercises. Throughout this year, we have been able to provide various trainings that the Emergency Operations Center staff, partners, and community can participate to maintain their skill sets in preparation for any type of disaster. Trainings are announced to our Emergency Operations Center stakeholders on a weekly basis. For exercises this year so far, we have conducted approximately three exercises. The first one was the Utilities Department hosted the annual debris tabletop exercise in April, and its purpose was to understand and coordinate debris management plans and procedures pre and post-storm. In April, the St. Lucie County E O C partnered with the Florida Division of Emergency Management and the State Emergency Operations Center to conduct an exercise to demonstrate an E O C activation during the landfall of a hurricane. And on July 13, 2022, next week, the Emergency Operations Center will be conducting an alternate operation exercise in which we'll be testing our virtual and alternate communication capabilities. As far as shelter operations in the county, should there be a need to activate shelters due to a hurricane, there are a total of 14 shelters in St. Lucie County. 11 of them are general population shelters located at schools throughout the county, and the St. Lucie School District coordinates the staffing and resources at the designated schools. One of those shelters is a pet-friendly shelter located at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. We also have two special needs shelters, one at the Fence Center and the other one at the City of Port St. Lucie Community Center, which will open if necessary. The shelters are operated by the Florida Department of Health in St. Lucie County and St. Lucie County staff. School District provides food and water, and the registration for the special needs shelter can be done via our website. Depending on the type of storm, shelters will be open using the tier approach. At a minimum, the following shelters will be open. Two general population shelters, one pet-friendly shelter, and one special needs shelter. Tools that we have available for the public in the event of an activation and also throughout our, what we call, blue sky 365 days a year. The first one is our public information line, which is 772-460-4357. That could be used to provide, at an activation, to provide up-to-date information and could be remotely activated at one of the county libraries should we have the need to do so. The other tool that we have is Alert St. Lucie, which is the emergency notification center for the county, and it provides emergency messages via home phone, email, and text message. And you can register online, visiting our website at stlucico.gov/alert. What can residents and visitors do to be prepared, planned, and stayed informed? We always encourage everyone to prepare now. Arrange a disaster kit, which contains at least three-day supply of non-perishable food and water, one gallon per person per day. Prescription medication, important documents, government issue ID, home and flood insurance, first aid kits. Prepare your home. Make sure that you install shutters, trim trees, and landscape, and remove any loose items in the yard. Also, prepare your pets. Make sure that they also have a three-day worth of pet food and water, pet medication, a pet first kit, vaccination records, and a pet carrier crate. And prepare your car. Make sure that you fill up the fuel tank. Plan now. Always know where to go. Make sure that you know whether you're going to go to a family or friend's home, a shelter in the area, which is a place of last resort. Know your evacuation routes, and make sure you evacuate tens of miles, not hundreds of miles, so it's easier when you have to return home. Know who to call. Prepare a communication plan. Have out-of-town contacts and family and friends, so they know when to contact you, and you also know who to reach in case of emergency. Hat phone numbers for your friends, as previously mentioned, work phone, helpline, and school where kids attend. And lastly, know where to meet in an emergency. Make sure you establish a local public place, that a family member or a friend's home, and let them know which is their location. And lastly, stay informed. It is important that you keep yourself informed of the situation in your immediate area during the disaster. In addition to television and radio, you can also get valuable information from the internet or from a smartphone app such as Alert St. Lucie that provides weather updates and alerts. and alerts. Keep in mind, a local news outlet may be able to provide more specific information in your area. And that concludes our 2022 hurricane season preparedness. Any questions? That is all.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Ron, you talked about the special needs shelter. Is it helpful to preregister those folks who may need the special assistance in the shelter for oxygen and then making sure that the, the proper amenities are necessary and on hand at that time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They, we highly encourage that they register with us. We have all information in our website, which they can go. They also have our phone number in there, which they can call, but we strongly encourage that, which better prepares us and Department of Health in the event that we have to activate. We maintain a current listing of our, all our special needs shelter clients, in which we share with our municipalities to ensure that we have a process in place. So, yes, we do encourage all our residents to preregister ahead of time.
And it'll help for staffing.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, moving along to the consent agenda. Is there any, any article or anything you would like to pull or to be discussed?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just have a discussion on L2. This is in regards to the Ten Mile Creek and George Lestrange, the restoration. And then also on L3.
Let me just find him, Commissioner. You said L?
L2, which is.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay. L2.
And L3.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Patrick Dye, the Public Works Director, for the record. I'm happy to field conversations about L2. This is one of our American Rescue Plan projects for the restoration of a OXPO in the Ten Mile Creek, the Ten Mile Creek watershed that happens to be within a county-owned preserve. We've been working with this contractor for some time, negotiating the fees back and forth. It's a pretty complex project. It's going to be a lot of permitting associated with it through the Army Corps, through DEP, and through the Water Management District. The hope is that we can set this up to really be a pilot project to demonstrate the ability of the staff to work together with our stakeholders and set that up for a future larger conversation.
So is this only for the design? That's my.
That is correct, Commissioner.
That cost is strictly for the design, not the permitting?
It's design and permitting.
It's design and permitting?
Yes.
And do you have an approximate of what the real cost to actually do it is in a run?
We do not have that yet, Commissioner. That will be developed as a component as that, the development of that plan unfolds.
I'm not against it. I'm just really outraged at the price of it for just a design.
It's not usual. It's kind of unusual.
Yeah.
We're seeing that. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
And then are you also going to take the Midway Road authorization for Kimbley Horn on L3?
Yes, ma'am.
The next one, 3.
L3, yes.
And do we have a timing, since this again is just strictly for design?
That is for design services. I'm going to look to the county engineer to understand what the timing of that design
Good evening, Commissioners. Dan Sorell, county engineer. The Kimbley Horn proposal has the landscaping for two segments on Midway Road. The one segment from I-95 to Glades Cut Off Road, and then they're also doing from Glades Cut Off Road to Selvets Road. So both segments will be priced in the proposal. The board will decide if they want to proceed with both of those. I don't remember what the timeframe was on the design, but it's going to take several months for them to do that design. It's going to be consistent with the Midway Road landscaping pout that has been performed east of these areas.
Okay. I'm still not getting an answer I can understand, and I apologize if you might have to repeat a little bit.
Yeah, you're asking about the timing.
I need the timing of when the design's going to be coming back. You've said they're now going to break it into two different phases?
Correct.
Okay, are they going to price out and design two different phases, or is it all going to be one?
It, they'll do both.
They'll do both?
Mr. Chairman.
That seems kind of like, almost ridiculous. From a timing perspective, it doesn't, I mean, we know what it looks, it should look like, so we're just repeating what's already been put out there already along Midway Road. So I'm not understanding why they can't do this in a short turnaround.
They can. Initially, we were just going to do from I-95 to Glades Cut Off Road, but then we asked them to also price from Glades to Selvets.
But that one's going to be tied in with the DOT as we move forward on the widening of that, is it not?
Yes, this is for additional landscaping in addition to that DOT project.
Well, since that's still several years out, I don't want to tie the two sections up. That's what my concern is coming from on the timing. If we could at least start the Midway Road from 95 down to, it would be Torino, I guess.
That was the intent, yes, to start with that project.
So they're starting that design first?
That's correct.
And bringing it in front of us?
They're doing them concurrently.
Okay.
But the original plan was to do the I-95 to Glades cut off portion. That was already being planned.
Did we not give them a timeframe to have it turned around in?
I don't know that we told them a timeframe. They have one in the proposal.
Remind me what it is, because I didn't see it. That's why I'm asking the question.
I could look that up for you. I don't know off the top of my head.
It would be helpful, yeah.
We can get that information back to you, Commissioner.
And as part of the discussion, to remind everybody, you know, we talked about that with some of the developments that are coming along midway, about the size of the tree trunks and so on and so forth, and the consistency of the actual landscape items and the lighting.
Right, and that's my concern, is that I don't understand why it's going to take this length of time to get it done when it's already existing. It's just copied over to a new phase. Granted, you know, go find your lines and utility lines and all that stuff. I get that. But we already have funding set aside from Midway, I'm sorry, from 95 down to, I believe it's Glades, if I'm not mistaken. And then from Glades on is a section to, all the way up to Selvets is a section that we're working with DOT. And you don't want to put the landscaping in on that one prior to the expansion of that road. So I would just like to see at least that one moved forward faster. That one phase.
Following what the Commissioner's telling you.
Attachment C in the Kimbley Horn proposal has the schedule. From notice to proceed, it's about 22 weeks, including survey, to have the conceptual design done. Construction documents are 12 weeks following approval of the concept.
So five months?
Yeah.
That's crazy.
So it would be 34 weeks if you add the 22 and the 12, you're talking 34 weeks.
That would be to come up with construction documents, correct?
So you're talking two, three years out before it's in the ground?
Pretty much.
Well, yeah, Commissioner, if I may, I mean, there is the survey. As you said, you got to go out there, you got to understand where the utilities are, because we're installing landscape and irrigation. So anytime you're looking at doing underground work, it's very important to understand where the potential conflicts might be in design around this.
I understand that, but I would think we would have a lot of that already on file. It just.
From the work that's already been done.
The timing doesn't, it's been done, so.
The design itself is six weeks following the survey. So it's taken them six weeks to design, and the survey itself is 16 weeks. It's, it's a complicated section with DOT right away and all that.
Have we got the DOT right away turned over to us yet? I know we had asked them.
I don't think so.
For the, yeah, for the Glades to Selvets.
Glades to 95, yeah.
And Glades 95 should be, yes.
All turned over to us by now?
I believe so.
So would they not have been at least partial surveys done when that was turned over?
Boundary surveys, probably.
Well, Commissioner, again, the way that the proposal was set up, we're, we're looking at doing concurrent design for both that segment of, of Midway between Glades and 95 and that other section, which, as you said, has already been done. It's been designed. But neither one of those are held up by another. The idea is to have those plans set up so either one of them can be independently put out for a bid and construction contract, and certainly one can move faster than the other.
I would just like to see that section at least from Midway to, I'm sorry, from 95 down to Torino or Glades. Kind of fast forward a little bit.
We can make that a priority. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I have a question. It's not on this, though. It is actually for the airport. It's on C1. It's not even pertaining to C1. I just need to know. I know that we had the new equipment. I don't know if this will be you, Stan, or if it'll be Eric. Is Eric even here? Oh. The new equipment came, and they're out there trying to clear the runway, and ERD has halted that. So was that ever resolved? Are they able to continue on with the clearing of the runway? Because the A wanted it cleared and ERD stopped it.
There was a meeting last week to clear up some communications problems, but yes, thank you for the equipment. The mulcher has been in use, and the backhoe, after seven years of not having one, came in about two weeks ago.
And, but when they started the work, ERD stopped the work?
Yes.
So were you able to meet with ERD and?
Eric met, Eric and airport staff, Tony included, met with ERD and arranged the, some communications issues about scrub jays and the mating season.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was cleared. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I just want to, before we approve, I just like to let the audience know that. Let me get there. Okay, that under Publix, L1 is related to the American Rescue Plan dollars. L2 is related to the American Rescue Plan, and I just want that for public, for public knowledge. And with that, I'll entertain.
Mr. Chairman, can I bring a point of interest? I think it's important, because most recently, we had the topic come before us with the mobile homes. And we, as the board, asked Planning and Zoning to rectify that because of the language and stuff. And so I want to say thank you to Maite and her staff, because this has been rather quick turnaround, probably 30 days. It's before us. It's on the consent agenda. So I think it's important for the residents to understand that we were fast acting on that, and it has been rectified in the language. So I think that that's, I want to say thank you to Planning and Zoning for making that happen.
Thank you, team. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thing moving right along.
Can I ask one more thing, Mr. Chairman? Before we go into public hearings, we have the Homeless Task Force here this evening. If we could move that item up and let Alfonso present so that the task force members could go ahead and leave, to not tie them in for the whole entire evening going through.
That's fine. Next time, though, before the meeting, just let, give me a heads up, okay, please?
Good evening, Chair, board members. I was just talking to Louise Hubbard back there. She really wanted to stay the entire meeting, so she was kind of a little bit.
I'm pretty sure that face said no.
She was a little bit disappointed that you, you moved. Well, well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you to talk about the homelessness task force. I'm going to make this very quick. I'm not going to go through every bullet pointed here, but I really just want to go over some important points regarding this particular presentation and take any questions. Here's the background regarding the task force, the reason why that you established a task force. This group came together very quickly. They worked very well together. They had several meetings together, and we delivered a report to you that I, we emailed to you regarding the recommendations prior to June 1st. So they were able to get their recommendations in before that particular timeframe. I'd like to recognize the task force members, and just, just very quickly, if they can stand in audience, because I know someone was out listening to task force members. If you can, just stand and just be recognized, because they did take a lot of time out of their schedule just to, to go to community meetings. We're talking about Commissioner Kathy Thompson, Commissioner Honor Gaines from the City of Fort Pierce, Councilman Anthony Bono from the City of Port St. Lucie, Judge Jeffrey Hendricks from the 19th Judicial Circuit, Captain Steven Sigman from the Sheriff's Office, Ms. Kaylee Furr from the St. Lucie Public Schools, Michelle Tomic from New Horizons, Ms. Louise Herbert from Tresco's Homeless Services Council, and Ms. Lisa Hatch from the Hans Clinic, Pastor Hazel Holman from Image of Christ, Mr. Sam Patterson for Career Source, Career Source, and Ms. Susan DeFrio from the Scott Family Companies. And also, I'd like to recognize Bruce in the back there as well. Bruce, as he was kind of leading us through this particular process and facilitating everything. So this is the task force members. They really stepped up and did a tremendous job on behalf of St. Lucie County. I mean, I do have certificates for them, but we'll, we'll pass those out a little later.
Let's thank them.
I'm not really going to go over the, these are the duties of the task force, just for the public to understand. They had specific duties that need to be accomplished that the board had approved and, and set forth for them. So I can tell you that they went through each one of these particular duties, and they took it very seriously, and they completed each one of these particular duties. Some deliverables, the task force could have the six regular meetings, so they were meeting on a monthly basis. They were bringing all types of stakeholders and subject matter experts together and talk about homelessness and affordable housing, because you know those kind of work hand-in-hand together. The task force hosted, they have three public engagement meetings as well, so they're, they're engaging the community and bringing the community in so that the community can give feedback as well. The task force authored a report to document the research and findings of the proceedings, so they provide, and provided that report to the board as well as part of the recommendations. Just some quick findings, and I'm not going to go all, all through all this, this wording, but some of the findings. Secure sustainable funding. We all know there's a gap in our community regarding sustainable funding when it comes to addressing homelessness issue. So that's one of the particular findings that really kind of stood out from this particular group. Develop shelters. There's a critical need for shelters, in some form or some type, whatever that may look and feel like for this county, doesn't have to mimic any other county. It has to feel just right for St. Lucie County. But there are some gaps out there when you start for families and for single females. There are some gaps in our particular community when it comes to shelters. Create affordable housing. We know we have the Affordable Housing Task, not Task Force, but Advisory Committee as well. So some of those recommendations are going to work hand-in-hand with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee recommendations, but Affordable Housing and addressing those particular issues are one of the findings that came out from the task force as well, because we, we noticed, even from the school board, a lot of people are couch surfing. A lot of people, you know, actually are sleeping in their cars. So that, that is really was an eye-opening finding as we really dig down deep into that. Prioritize target populations. You know, obviously, we have a, a growing population here in St. Lucie County, and so we need to prioritize our target population and really address that. Some of the particular areas of target population that the task force identified was elderly and disabled. You're starting to see that more and more, especially on a fixed income. Displaced families that are low income, you're starting to see that. You know, you know, the board invested a lot of dollars when it came to the American Rescue Plan and, and the CARES Act to help with evictions and things that are needed for rent, and so that money is running out, it's gone. And so you're starting to see a little bit more of that occur. Single adult women, very low income, street homes, lower, no income. These are the target populations that we have to start looking at, the better to address. So the task force really felt that we need to prioritize our target populations. Here's some of the recommendations. Recommendation one, the task force recommendation is that the Home Together Homeless Strategy Plan. We provided that particular plan as a draft to the board months ago. When we formed the task force, we provided that again. The task force actually went through that particular report, and they really liked the report. And that report really got into some strategies and recommendations on how And that report really got into some strategies and recommendations on how we can address homelessness within our community. So one of the recommendations from the task force was to adopt that particular plan with some modifications to it. And really have some focus areas that I just went through, from sustainable funding to develop shelter capacity, creating affordable housing, prioritizing target populations. So all that has been incorporated within that particular plan. Recommendation two, as part of the Home Together Homeless Strategic Plan, there was a recommendation to establish a homeless advisory committee. And it was, actually, it was seven-member committee that was recommended in the plan. The task force recommended that go into nine, to nine members.
Who would you include, Mr. Jefferson?
Well, there's a second agenda item that includes the items in there. We definitely want the cities to be a part of this particular, so represented from the cities to be a part of it. We definitely would like for a mental health professional, someone with a case management background as part of it. Right now, if I'm talking about that particular item, we have a category that deals with a resident, but we feel we can bring residents into the meetings already. So we want to substitute that for a school board member to be a part of that. So in that particular, the next agenda item lists out those particular categories. Recommendation number three is to adopt and implement the Home Together Homeless Strategic Plan. The plan had several different recommendations in there that the task force felt was addressing the needs of the particular community. So they're recommending that to be adopted and implemented. Some of the next steps, review the changes to the Home Together Homeless Strategic Plan and approve. We're already working on that. So the recommendation that's came back from the task force, we made changes to the plan to incorporate those particular changes, like going from seven members to nine members. There's some small changes that we had to make to the particular plan. As the second agenda item says, adopt the resolutions to create the homeless advisory committee as defined by the Home Together Homeless Strategic Plan. Now remember, this task force was put together, they only had six months to work. So obviously, they can't dig so deep into everything that is happening in the community. There still is work to do. So the task force felt there was a need to do advisory committees so we can dig a little bit deeper into some of the particular items and come up with some strategies that we can implement that benefit St. Lucie County. And so that's why they recommended the advisory committee itself. The nine-member committee's responsibilities are review progress of the St. Lucie County Tenure Plan and end homelessness, foster and promote cooperation between government and non-governmental stakeholders, provide a focal point for the needs and factors impacting those experiencing homelessness. We know in our particular community, as we grow, there is going to be a need to be ahead of the curve. And that's what we're trying to do right now, is get ahead of the curve. I do not see it as a problem at this particular point, but we have an opportunity in this community to be ahead of the curve to address homelessness. And that concludes my presentation. So the item that is in front of you is to accept the recommendations from the homeless task force. And the second agenda item is the adoption of a resolution to create the advisory committee for homelessness.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Jefferson?
I just have one you mentioned, and I know it's not, it doesn't reflect that in the task force itself on the school board member.
Correct.
Is that, are you going to make that correction?
Yes. As part of the motion, I would like to make the correction of replacing the category that we had in there regarding resident, because we will be doing community outreach. So we will have the residents as part of this, but we would like to replace that with a school board member.
And that's an item two.
Okay.
Because we had talked, yeah, we had talked about that, that the residents are going to have a voice any way you look at it. The school board works already with families, and they know where the data is. So to add that to it, but we're going to do that under item two, so.
No, that's good, because I can tell you, my daughter's a public school teacher, and because of the school, she knew that two of those kids were homeless. They either were staying hotels, and those children, if they were in a proper environment, probably could have done better, and they were good students. So I think that's good.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have two voting items. One is the acceptance of recommendations for the one St. Lucie County Community Homeless Task Force. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And on number two, it's a staff recommendation of Resolution 2022-124, establishing the homelessness advisory committee.
I'll make the motion to approve with the correction of striking the county resident to the school board member.
So noted. We have a-
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Well, again, I'd like to say thank you to the task force member for all their work. I know they're here. They got off work just to come here to support this, so thank you.
And we truly do appreciate, I know the pay is really good, but I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. And we do have some certificates that I signed in my office today for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Not a problem. Okay. Okay, well, all set. We'll let, give them a minute to get themselves situated, and then we'll go to public hearings. Okay, we're going to move along to public hearings, 9A1, which the county attorney will be handling.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property Acquisition Manager Joanne Riley will be handling this item.
And just to let everybody know, this is quasi-judicial.
Good morning, Mr., good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Joanne Riley, Property Acquisition Manager. Item 9A1 is a proposed exchange agreement between Willow Lakes LLC and St. Lucie County. The county received a proposed exchange agreement from Willow Lakes to exchange approximately 2.09 acres along Midway Road owned by Willow Lakes for approximately 3.31 acres of Gordy Road right-of-way owned by St. Lucie County, as further shown on the attached map in yellow, owned by Willow Lakes, and red, owned by St. Lucie County. On June 16th of 2022, county staff received an email from Lee Dobbins on behalf of his client requesting a continuance of the public hearing scheduled for this evening to September 6, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the item may be heard. Staff is recommending that the board accept the request from Mr. Dobbins on behalf of his client to continue tonight's public hearing until September 6th at 2022 at 6:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the item may be heard. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Again, this is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, I've not spoke to anyone since that request. I mean, I don't know how far back you want to go, because this is like the second hearing. Our request is extended, I should say, by the staff.
Same.
Kathy?
Same.
Just introduced to me by Mr. Dobbins in passing.
Yep, same here. Okay, what's the will of the board?
Motion to approve or extend.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, and I have a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up, we'll have, I believe Catherine Barbieri will be presenting item two.
Chair, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, excuse me one second. Because that was a public hearing, I think we still have to open and close it, don't we, Mr. McIntyre?
Normally, we would. If there's anyone, this is on the prior item, on the proposed exchange. We have already voted to continue. If there's anybody here from the public on that that can't make it on the 6th, this would be the time to talk. Otherwise, it would be better to wait till the 6th. That's when we're actually going to be making a decision. So, Mr. Chairman, if there is anybody that was here for that public hearing that would like to speak that won't be here on the 6th, now would be the time. Otherwise, we'll continue the item to the 6th.
Okay, my bad. I thought by the 6th that we would have public hearing again. But if there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak on the subject matter now, please stand up and present yourself at the podium. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening. Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. What you have before you is a public hearing to amend Chapter 43 of the Code of Ordinance of St. Lucie County to include weight limits on Indian River Drive. Section 316-555 Florida statute provides that the Board of County Commissioners may prescribe weight limits lower than the limits described in Chapter 316 whenever and its judgment any road part thereof by reason of its design, deterioration, or other climate or natural causes be liable to damage or destroy motor vehicles if the gross weight limit thereof shall exceed the limits established by the Board of County Commissioners. As you know, Indian River Drive is designated as a Florida scenic highway. It is a narrow two-lane road that tracks north and south adjacent to Indian River Lagoon. It's approximately 42 miles long. It's a sole access road for most of the residents there. In 2004, it was substantially damaged by hurricanes, and it was cost to exceed $29 million to repair. St. Lucie County Road and Bridge has determined that due to its design and previous deteriorations, Indian River Drive shall be damaged by motor vehicles if the gross weight thereof exceeds 6,000 pounds. The City of Fort Pierce has no objection to this limit. The St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office has asked that we add a qualifier for delivery vehicles, that it states that they have to be delivering to some, an address on Indian River Drive. That request for that qualifier is to help them with enforcement. The exact language that we're requesting is that Indian River Drive from Citrus Avenue to South St. Lucie County Line, truck traffic limited to vehicles with an empty weight of no more than 6,000 pounds, excluding the motorhomes and recreational vehicles, delivery vehicles, and school buses who have a destination on Indian River Drive. This is a public hearing. It has been properly advertised, and the newspaper and staff is recommending that the board approve the ordinance.
Any questions, Catherine? Again, this is a public hearing. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. What's the will of the board?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zidaski, a second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go on to B, Planning and Development Services, number one, which is the Helseth And again, this is, this item is also quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, I've only spoken with staff.
Commissioner Bartz.
Staff.
Staff. Commissioner Townsend?
Staff.
Commissioner?
Staff.
Myself, staff. Good evening.
All right, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Tahereh Curry, Planning and Development Services Department. Agenda item 9B1 is amendment to the official zoning atlas for a change in zoning from the AG1 zoning district to the industrial-like zoning district for 18.22 acre site located south of St. Lucie Boulevard, approximately one quarter of a mile east of Kings Highway. The public hearing was noticed with the signed petition site, a display ad in a local newspaper on June 23rd, 2022, and mailed notices to property owners within 500 feet. Proof of advertising is provided within the agenda packet. Mailed notices were sent out to eight property owners within 500 feet. The planning department did not receive any responses. This is the area showing the subject site outlined in red, located south of St. Lucie Boulevard, approximately one quarter of a mile east of Kings Highway. A future land use category is compatible with zoning districts that allow for a broad range of industrial uses. The proposed rezoning to industrial-like zoning district is consistent with the township, villages, and countryside future land use designation per the comprehensive plan, Table 1-3, zoning use designation slash zoning compatibility chart. The subject site currently has a zoning designation of AG1 Agriculture 1 Zoning District. The proposed rezoning will conform to the minimum lot size and material requirements for Section 70401 for the industrial-like zoning district. The surrounding properties to the east and south is industrial-like, and the property to the west and north is zone, the property to the west is agriculture AG1, and the property to the north is AR1. The proposed rezoning request will allow for an industrial subdivision consistent with industrial-like zoning district. This rezoning petition is consistent with the surrounding zoning districts in the area. This petition conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section 110603, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policies. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve this rezoning petition. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions to hear? Again, this is a public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to speak, please identify yourselves, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Abraham Chabab. I'm representing the applicant. For the record, I haven't sworn in. This is quasi-judicial. I don't know if I have to be sworn in or not. We agree with staff recommendation. If you have any question, I'll be more than happy to answer it.
Appreciate that, sir.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Number two is also quasi-judicial, and that's the Rock Road Farms.
Mr. Chair, I've only spoken with staff.
Commissioner Bartz?
Staff.
Staff.
Staff, sir.
And staff. Tahereh, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening again. Tahereh Curry, Planning and Development Services Department. Agenda item 9B2 is amendment to the official zoning atlas for a change in zoning for the Agriculture Residential 1 zoning district to the Agriculture Zoning District for a 7.82 acre site located at 2211 South Rock Road in Fort Pierce, Florida. This petition hearing was noticed with the signed petition site, a display ad in local newspaper on June 23rd, 2022, and mailed notices to property owners within 500 feet. Proof of advertising is provided within the agenda packet. Mailed notices were sent out to 15 property owners within 500 feet. The planning department did not receive any responses. This is the area showing the 7.82 acre site outlined in red, located at 2211 South Rock Road in Fort Pierce, Florida. The future land use category is compatible with zoning districts that allow for a broad range of agriculture uses. The proposed rezoning to AG1 zoning district is consistent with the residential estate future land use designation per the comprehensive plan, Table 13, zoning use designation slash zoning compatibility chart. The subject property currently has a zoning designation of AR1. The proposed rezoning petition will conform to the minimum lot size and material requirements for the AG1 zoning district. The surrounding properties to the north and east is agriculture residential 1. To the west is AG1 zoning district, and to the west is agriculture residential 1 and utilities. The purpose of this rezoning request is to expand agriculture services for agriculture for growing various fruits and agriculture operations consistent with the Land Development Code 30103A for the AG1 zoning district. This petition conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the Land Development Code, Section 110603, and is consistent with the St. Lucie Comprehensive Plan, goals, objectives, and policies. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve this rezoning petition. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions of staff? Again, this is a public hearing. If anyone from the audience would like to speak, please come up and identify yourself. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Motion to approve. I'd also like to note on the record, this is a product of our Sunshine Kitchen. These men started, and they had a dream, and they went there to the Tasserta Kitchen and started their business, and this is the outcome from it. So this is a good story.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations. Moving on to number three, which is Cabo Rio RV Resort Rezone. Again, this is quasi-judicial.
Staff.
Staff. Chris?
Staff.
Linda?
Staff.
Mr. Hudsonson?
Staff.
My, my, myself included, staff. Good evening, Chris.
For the record, for the record, Chris McCrain with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight I'll be presenting Agenda Item 9B3 for a rezone from the AR1 or agricultural residential and the commercial general zoning districts to the PRW or planned retail workplace and a preliminary planned retail workplace regulating plan for a 146 lot recreational vehicle park with associated site improvements and a future commercial out parcel situated along Kings Highway. And again, this is quasi-judicial. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03, advertisement for this public hearing was advertised in a local newspaper on Wednesday, June 22, 2022. Notices were mailed to adjacent property owners within 500 feet of the subject parcel, and a sign was posted on the subject site. The 25.13 acre project site is situated on the south side of Indrio Road and on the east side of Kings Highway in Fort Pierce, within the county's airport and TVC or towns, villages, and countryside overlay districts. Subject parcel and the properties situated to the southeast and west are designated by the TVC future land use with commercial and residential median, medium land uses to the north and mixed-use land uses to the southeast. On May 30, 2006, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the TVC Land Development Code Regulation and Comprehensive Plan element to further guide land use and development within the portions of St. Lucie County to protect the public health, welfare, and safety, and ensure the aesthetic and environmental resources are further enhanced and protected from impairment while avoiding urban sprawl. Prior to the adoption of the TVC overlay district, subject parcel had an underlying commercial future land use designation. The parcel includes split zoning designations with approximately 18 acres zoned commercial general and approximately seven acres zoned AR1 or agricultural residential. The parcels situated to the east and south of the parcel are zoned AR1, with the properties to the north and west zoned commercial general and AG1 or agricultural. This petition seeks to redesignate the subject parcel zoning from the AR1 and CG commercial general zoning districts to the planned retail workplace zoning designation while retaining a future 2.6 acre commercial out parcel fronting on Kings Highway. The commercial general and planned retail workplace zoning districts are compatible with the TVC future land use designation per the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Consistency Land Development Code categorizes recreational vehicle parks as a commercial use, and pursuant to the Comprehensive Plan TVC element and the transferable development value map allows commercial uses to be permitted within the subject parcels or parcel. Comprehensive Plan Policies 11.1.2.5 and 11.1.3.1 affirm the ability for the commercial development within the subject parcel due to the pre-existing commercial future land use designation. The applicant is proposing a 146 recreational vehicle resort with associated onsite amenities and a future 2.64 acre commercial out parcel fronting on Kings Highway. The preliminary plan identifies the RV lot configuration, stormwater retention, walking trails, and an associated administrative office, maintenance building, clubhouse with pool, lazy river, wave pool, and supporting vehicular parking. The development provides utility infrastructure connection through the St. Lucie County Utilities Department, which will offer central water, wastewater, and electrical connection to each lot. Internal vehicular use areas and pedestrian pathways provide adequate connections to the existing infrastructure and meet the provisions for access to new developments. The applicant has indicated the intention to allow accessory structures and/or uses to be permitted within the individual RV lots, which may include but not limited to tiki huts, pergolas, fire pits, outdoor kitchens, and storage lockers. These uses would be reviewed at the time of a final, final site plan and shall identify the area in which these accessory structures and uses would be permitted while maintaining the minimum required front, side, and rear yard setbacks for the RV lots. The preliminary plan identifies primary paved access on the east side of Kings Highway and a 12-foot wide northbound right turn lane for right-in, right-out turn movements only, as well as a 12-foot wide southbound median along Kings Highway, providing the U-turn capabilities to access the site. Right-of-way improvements have been reviewed and approved by the Florida Department of Transportation, and a future cross-access connection to the commercial parcel is provided in order to eliminate additional driveway connections along Kings Highway. In addition, the site identifies a stabilized access to the north along Indrio Road, which would be utilized for emergency and pedestrian access only. Upon approval of the preliminary retail, preliminary retail workplace regulating plan, the Cabo Rio RV Resort must receive final minor site plan approval pursuant to Land Development Code Sections 11.02.05 and 11.02.02 for any non-residential use less than 100,000 square feet, which may receive administrative approval from the planning director following review and certification from the development review committee. No development within the future commercial out parcel is proposed at this time and would be required to receive separate site plan review in the future. The proposed commercial out parcel rezone would allow for a variety of commercial, commercial uses to serve the surrounding areas. A full list of these proposed uses is available in the published agenda packet, but some of the permitted uses may include but not limited to advertising, retail trades, social services, travel agencies, cleaning services, business services, community, computer services, veterinary services, general merchandise stores, home furniture and furnishings, private education services, and contract construction services for office only. Conditional uses may include but not limited to liquor stores, child daycare, amusement parks, pest control services, self-service car washes, freestanding drink places, sports and recreational camps, and household mini storage and mini warehousing. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, 15 mailed notices were mailed to adjacent property owners within 500 feet of the subject parcel. As of today, we have not received any responses, whether in favor or not. On June 16, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and voted seven to one to forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners with the following recommended, recommended conditions of approval for the board to consider. The site plan shall provide additional landscaping along the east property boundary to provide additional buffering from the adjacent properties. The Florida Department of Transportation, county staff, and the applicant shall work together to determine if the proposed Kings Highway site access and right-of-way improvements can be reconfigured to restrict southbound and, to restrict southbound to northbound U-turn movements and allow vehicles to make a southbound left turn directly into the project. And last, the, the Florida Department of Transportation and county staff and the applicant shall work together to determine if a second unrestricted access to Indrio Road can be approved, provided, and approved. The proposed planned retail workplace rezone and preliminary regulating plan conform to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucie County Land Development Code Sections 4.04.04, 11.06.03, and 11.02.07, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies outlined in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Comprehensive Plan and all those. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the proposal subject to the following Recreational vehicle sites shall be for recreational purposes only. The recreational vehicle resort shall only allow recreational vehicles and park models for temporary transient living quarters, recreational camping, and travel. In accordance with Florida Statute 320.01 subsection A1B, no recreational vehicle lot shall be eligible for homestead exemption. No permanent additions or expansions to the recreational vehicles and/or park models shall be prohibited, permitted. No guest shall occupy the recreational vehicle park for more than 100 days in any calendar year, as evidenced by the length of stay shown in the guest register. Pursuant to Florida Statute 513.112, at all times, the recreational vehicle park operator shall maintain a guest register showing the dates of rental and the rates charged for the guest's occupancy. This register shall be maintained in chronological order, maintained for a period of two years, and made available for inspection by the Florida Department of Health at any time. Such operator shall maintain a current copy of the Florida State Statute, Chapter 513, for mobile home and recreational vehicle parks in the clerk office, which shall be made available to the public upon request. The preliminary plat and final minor site plan shall, shall depict the specific approved RV lot types, private street sections, required landscape and street, street trees, pedestrian access, and any space or limited structures as per Section 3.01.03 subsection GG of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code. The future commercial out parcels shall only allow the uses identified within Exhibit D of this resolution. Lot types identified within the approved preliminary site plan dated April 2022 shall be the approved lot types limiting the use to a transient recreational vehicle park for temporary occupancy. No, no accessory structure shall be permitted within the recreational vehicle lots unless approved through the final site plan for limited accessory structures supporting the transient use. Prior to the issuance of a vegetation removal permit, all preserved native trees proposed to meet required tree mitigation requirements will be required to be barricaded and inspected. Prior to the issuance of a vegetation removal permit, a 100% survey per Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission protocol for gopher tortoises shall be provided. If any construction activities are proposed within 25 feet of any gopher tortoise burrows, a relocation permit shall also be provided in accordance with FWCC requirements. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, of all Category 1 listed invasive plants shall be eradicated from the site. The applicant shall accommodate the current volume of off-site drainage flowing through the subject parcel. A northbound right turn lane is required and shall meet the minimum requirements in the Florida Design Manual and shall provide a buffered bicycle lane. The turn lane shall extend beyond State Road 713 or Kings Highway, median nose, and contain additional pavement to accommodate large vehicles southbound to northbound U-turns. A minimum, minimum driveway length of 150 feet as measured from the ultimate right-of-way line of the state road to the first conflict point is required. Lastly, a recorded cross-access easement with the remaining out parcel is required. The cross-access easement shall be labeled and detailed on the site plan as a hatched or shaded area and include the official record book, end page number, or instrument number on the plan sheet. This condition may be satisfied by dedicating on the plat an easement or street tract providing access from Kings Highway through the out parcel to the RV park. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant and their team do have a short presentation they would also like to present to the board.
Mr. Chair, before they come up, can I ask Chris a few questions?
Sure.
Chris, when we spoke, and you, you mentioned it, you touched on it, on the site access, I had significant concerns about a left turn in immediately from Kings Highway into the site. I see in this diagram that it actually has a U-turn further down Kings Highway.
South, south of the site.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Having spent a little time on the road this past weekend, there are a lot of people towing trailers today, I guess maybe because of COVID and so on, but what I did notice is there's a significant delay for some folks when they're pulling their, their trailers to cross-traffic. So I, again, this is about a safety issue. Right turn in only, crossing traffic has a concern for me, whether that or it's going to be considered for the northern portion of this site plan. Did I understand you to say that staff and FDOT was going to look at the northern exit or entrance into the, into the site?
Yes. So the northern entrance along Indrio Road is a state road, but it is maintained by the county. And because of conflicts with separation from the intersection of Kings Highway and Indrio Road, there were some conflicts to provide a full access to that driveway. So it's being limited to pedestrian and emergency access only.
Okay, so that, that arrow is not a, a right turn out, out of the northern portion?
Let me go back to my presentation.
And I don't know which one I'm looking, maybe it was the one I had in my office earlier in the presentation. But you're saying it's not going to be a, an entrance or exit?
Emergency use only.
Along Indrio Road, it would only be for emergency vehicles, fire EMS, and pedestrian access.
Then, I didn't see it listed in here, but from a utility standpoint, are these all going to be sewer hookups, water?
So there's going to be connections through St. Lucie County Utilities, and then they would provide individual sewer, wastewater, water, and electric to each RV site.
I just didn't, my concern is that they would be septic.
No, he said it was utilities.
That's why I'm clarifying.
There's no septic.
For the record.
For the record.
The other is, you, you stated 100 days for length of stay. Is that the definition of transient 100 days?
Per state statute, 180 days is actually the transient stay. So that's what staff based their, their recommendation on, the state statute.
Okay, because I thought I heard you just say 100, so I just want to make sure that's clarified.
I was, I said a lot of stuff, so.
Okay. I said it wrong.
I believe you did say 100, but you meant one.
I apologize. I meant 180 days.
All right. And then lastly, this applicant knows that tourist development tax is collected on short stays.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Tourist development tax is to be collected on short stays, overnight stays.
I'm not familiar with that. I'll, I'll let the applicant answer that.
And then the other, from the drainage side, FDOT and the county participated in the stormwater lake that is at the corner of Indrio and Kings Highway. This project is not scheduled to discharge into that lake, is that correct?
No, this, this project is not, it's going to be discharging to the southeast after the outfall from their internal lake. It would be discharging to the southeast.
And then the last is, as this plan is developed, there's certainly going to be a lot of tree canopy mitigation and/or relocation, et cetera. I have a concern on a phase two for the commercial side. Years ago, when we were starting to develop back in 2006, '07, '08, a lot of folks came in and they clear-cut everything, and then when something went sideways, you just had a vacant space and it just became nothing but weeds and, and dirt. So is it a, a consideration of not clearing that commercial space until such time as development is going to occur, rather than clear-cut the whole?
Yes, so that, that whole site, the 2.6 acre commercial parcel would be treated as a separate site plan. So they would have to come in and receive a separate site plan approval, which would deal with any tree mitigation that may be required with that development.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Again, this is a public hearing. If anyone from the audience would like to speak.
Mr. Chair, we hear from the applicant first, because my questions are going to be directed to them.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Lee Dobbins with the Demed Law Firm here in Fort Pierce. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for their hard work on this. You know, any project in the TVC- You know, any project in the TVC has some additional hoops to jump through, so I appreciate their hard work on the project. I'm here representing the applicant, Jim and Kerry Chalmers. They're the owners of this property, they're here tonight. We also have Aaron Stanton and Tom Houter with MBV Engineering, and Brian Nolan with Lucido and Associates. He's going to give you a short PowerPoint in just a minute here. This property is known as the Crayola Property. The Benny family of Crayola fame bought this property in the 1920s to put a tourist resort on it. Unfortunately, that never came to be, but if you fast forward to today, Jim and Kerry Chalmers bought this property just a couple of months ago, they closed on it, and they would like to put a tourist resort on it. They are local business owners, and they own five local businesses, including Atlantic Custom Landscapes, based here in Fort Pierce. And they bought this land to develop a very nice, high-end RV park. Their vision is to take advantage of the natural beauty of the site, to preserve the trees on the site, and provide very nice amenities and landscaping. They are branding this as an RV eco-resort, and they want to promote local ecotourism and agritourism, including the local outdoor opportunities that we have here in St. Lucie County, such as fishing, kayaking, horseback riding. They want to promote the history of the site and the natural beauty, and as I say, they want to preserve the tree canopy, and Brian will show you more about that in a minute. For their clubhouse restaurant, they're talking about, they're talking to local chefs about sourcing sustainable local produce and organic beef grown in St. Lucie County. For the maintenance vehicles, trimmers and blowers on site, they'll all be electric. They want to use pervious surfaces and recycled materials for the RV pads. They're planning on how they can minimize their use of water, fertilizer, and pesticides, and they're working with an engineer on using rooftop solar in the clubhouse and using a heat exchanger to heat the swimming pool. The goal is to be a leader in RV resorts and for the resort to contribute to ecotourism in St. Lucie County. Also, as local businesspeople, Jim and Kerry have a great network of local business contacts. They'll be using local businesses to build the resort and also to obtain the services that will help to operate it. They expect they'll need to hire 60 to 70 employees. For those of us who work on a lot of projects here in St. Lucie County, this is the kind of project that's really, really fun, the kind of thing that we really like to be able to bring before you. It's a great project, great local businesspeople behind it, and it's just a really neat project. And with that, Brian's going to give you a short presentation on it, and then we'll be here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brian Nolan with Lucido and Associates, representing the applicant. To echo Lee, we do appreciate staff's assistance through this. This was a pretty complicated one. Been working on it now for almost two years, I believe. So, with that, Jim walked into our office a couple of years ago, 2020, and he had an idea to create a destination RV resort that would reflect the natural beauty and history of the area and enhance the community with a new destination for commercial tourism. It's not often, as Lee said, we get non-developers that walk in the office and have a very clear, determined path set forth. So, we signed on, and we bought in hook, line, and sinker, and it's been a joy working with the Chalmers and staff ever since. So, with that, what we're proposing is an RV resort comprised of 146 privately-owned, platted RV lots with full utility hookups. As was mentioned, 180-day max length of stay to maintain the transient nature. Lots will be held in a rental pool when they're not in use by the owner, and things such as that will be governed by a declaration of covenants that Mr. Dobbins' office has also been working on. Part of the amenity package, we have a 600 linear foot lazy river, a resort-style pool, a splash pad, FlowRider wave pool, that's a trademark name, that's a, you can look it up on, you can Google that, 5,000-square-foot clubhouse, including restaurants, spa, gym, flex and gathering spaces. We'll have onsite maintenance and bathing and laundry facilities and a sundry. When guests arrive, they'll be welcomed by a 3,200-square-foot guest arrival and administration building. We'll have about 4,000, actually, it's over 4,000 linear feet of improved walking trails, preservation of over 3,000 inches of native trees. This was one of the more complicated, and I think Amy can tell you, mitigation plans that we've had to work through. I think there were some 5,000 trees on this site, so the tree survey was pretty in-depth. And we're installing over 2,000 inches of native trees to replace onsite the inches that we are removing. Luckily, Jim owns a landscape contractor business.
Does help him.
So, he'll keep himself busy for a little while. We have extensive upland buffer and littoral zone plantings in accordance with the TVC guidelines, and we're reserving a 2.6 acre commercial out parcel. As has been discussed, primary access is a right-in, right-out on Kings Highway with a proposed northbound right turn lane on Kings and a proposed southbound U-turn lane, and I'll get into more of the DOT wrangling in a bit. We danced with them for about 10 or 11 months. Access on Indrio is limited to emergency and also pedestrian. You'll see in the site plan that we bring the RVs and the guests in well within the site and have over 500 feet of stacking lanes so that we can easily accommodate everybody, get them off of Kings Highway. As also mentioned, water and sewer will be provided by St. Lucie County, internal circulation via 24-foot-wide asphalt drives with curb and gutter, 5-foot concrete sidewalk connection to Kings, and again, over 4,000 linear feet of walking trails. Here again is our access, which will also be shared with the future commercial out parcel, and that'll be, have a access easement agreement associated with that. Here is our turning movements on Kings, and I have another slide later that'll get into a little bit more detail on that. Our Indrio Road access, our maintenance and guest arrival administration areas. This is our queuing. We've done this a few other places, it seems to work well, two queuing and stacking lanes, a detrailering lane to get everybody in and out pretty quickly and efficiently. We also have employee and guest parking if there are needs in the administration area, a centrally-located amenity center, which is pretty stocked, a stormwater pond with extensive littoral and upland buffer plantings. This gives an indication of our internal circulation, both one-way and two-way, and how folks will circumnavigate to the site. We are also providing a connection to the parcel to the east to provide, you know, interconnectivity there. This outlines our walking trails along the perimeter and then through, pardon, the upland buffer and not the littoral areas, but scooting around it and then out to Kings. This, we amped up the rendering, we didn't add any plants, we just changed some colors because I think there was some confusion at the planning board on what we were proposing to do. So, in these zoomed-in areas, you can see the dark green are the actual surveyed canopies of these trees that we're proposing to preserve, and then a smattering of palm trees and smaller caliper trees throughout. This is a good look at the entry and arrival, the littoral, the upland buffer, heavy planting along the south property line particularly. Jim and Kerry provided us, pretty early on, some imagery that they, of what they expect this to look like. So, you can see that they plan on keeping as much of the understory as possible and nestling in these RV stalls. This next slide here, we had a gentleman at Planning Board, Mr. Bennett, raised some concerns of us impacting the visual quality of his life and not fully understanding where Mr. Bennett was located. We went back in the office and looked, and I thought this graphic, you know, just shows his property in relation to ours, kind of what you have to see through to get to ours. This is a current Google Street View of the pasture to the immediate south, but that tree line is roughly Mr. Bennett's west line, pretty heavily vegetated. And then also with our vegetation that we're proposing along the south in these property lines, I'm not sure there's much more we can do to visually buffer ourselves, as it were. This timeline here, again, starting in January of 2021 is when we first applied to DOT for access management pre-application meeting. You have it here in your packet, I can go into it in a lot more detail if you want. We went back and forth a lot, we moved entrances, we had it along the south originally, we thought we had some traction there, there was a little backtracking, then we had to move it north, and ultimately, what DOT would approve, and we sent it to the top tier of District 4, we exhausted all efforts. They would only permit a northbound right turn lane and a southbound U-turn movement on Kings. Access Management Review Committee approved it, they didn't find any issues with any safety concerns. I'm not saying there aren't, Commissioner Zdowski, but that is what they approved. This would be the scenario with any other development, I believe, that would go on this parcel. I think the access on Indrio would be precluded for reasons that staff can provide, and I believe that the northbound right turn lane and the southbound U-turn movement would be the only access that could be provided on Kings.
And I'll just share my point of view, is that we can engineer our way into safety, 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 but personal responsibility oftentimes becomes the issue as opposed to the engineering process.
Fully agree.
Several areas in the county that we deal with from personal responsibility rather than engineering.
Fully agree, Commissioner. This next slide, I'm a little behind. This slide here shows the auto-turn analysis that our engineers ran. This is utilizing, I think it's a 47-foot-long fire truck, that was the closest we had to a 42 or 43-foot RV. That demonstrates the turning movement can be made, and here it is in highlighted fashion. And that concludes my presentation. We're very happy to be here.
Nice talk.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Again, this is a public hearing.
Mr. Chair, may I have questions to the applicant prior to taking public comment?
Okay, she has some questions for you, so please.
So, I'll leave it up to whoever wants to answer them, and I'm going to follow up on Commissioner Zdowski's comments on your retention pond. On the commercial site, is there any way to tie your retention for, that's going, may be needed for that site over to there, or is there retention, is that piece, the one that's not being heard tonight, but it's still part of, when I'm looking at the drainage issue, will it too run to the southeast?
It's, my understanding is it's running to the southwest.
It's going to go to the southwest, under Kings?
Does it?
The commercial site?
Yes, it's in the new canal there, on the west side.
I understand it, but I thought I heard him say earlier, the retention was draining to the southeast.
Our engineers coming up to clarify.
Okay.
But when that out parcel is designed, it will have to provide for its own stormwater retention onsite as a part of its design. That will be one of its requirements.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Aaron Stanton, I'm with MBV Engineering. I can answer any questions you have. I guess if there's a particular question.
It's more in regards to the piece, the commercial piece up on Kings Highway. I'm trying to see where that drainage for that piece goes, because staff told me one thing, I'm hearing something else. Commissioner Zdowski hit the retention or the campground itself, and I thought I heard it say that it was running to the southeast.
Yes. The stormwater retention we show for our parcel here, it is just for the RV resort. The out parcel cannot be accommodated in the stormwater lake as shown. What they would have to do would be to provide their own storage on their out parcel. They could provide underground, dry detention. I don't think there's room enough for a small lake there, but they would have to provide their own on the out parcel. And then what we would do is we would provide an easement for our outfall, which runs, if you're looking at the parcel or the site here, from the lake, we have an easement running along the southern boundary, and then we discharge across Kings Highway into the Fort Pierce Water Control District.
All right, so it goes to the southwest, not the southeast?
Southwest, I'm sorry.
That's what was throwing me, I'm sitting here going, why am I going to go under? Going back to the DOT issue on that road, is this, this is with it four-laned right through there?
Yes. Correct. Right along the south edge, right, yeah, right where we would be doing the turning movement there, that's where our outfall would go underneath the road and into the canal.
Okay. All right. Which one of you just did the, I think it was, you just talked about DOT and all the issues you went on with DOT.
Brian.
This section right through here, this is where the four-lane tapers down, does it not? But it, but that it goes up to, the proposal's to go to the four-lane, so how is that, is this going to be like throwaway turns that you're doing here, or is that all going to be changed when that section becomes four-laned right there?
We're extending the median to the build-out, and then we're going to, and we're going to make the U-turn movement. So, when the four-laning comes in, it'll all tie in together.
Okay. So, it's not throwaway?
We talked about that, we went down that road.
All right, well, I needed to know.
That was a month and a half discussion.
And then, my other question is in regards to, and again, either I didn't ask the right questions to staff when I spoke with them, but this kind of shocked me because I didn't get your copy of your presentation. I was under the impression that these were transient rental lots, if you will, for the motorhomes, but yet, in your presentation, it's clearly stated 146 privately-owned, and then they're held into a rental pool. Can you explain where, what part did I miss there?
So, the units initially will be owned by Jim and Kerry Chalmers, developers of the project, but they can, the individual lots will be platted and they can all be sold off to individuals, but when they're not on their site, it will be in the rental pool. So, if they were all sold to individuals, they could stay on there for no more than 180 days on their lot. And when they're not on their site, it would have to go into the rental pool. Most people would probably not choose to stay there the entire time, but would maybe come down here for a few months or a few weeks or however long they choose to use it. So, it's kind of like a condo hotel where, you know, somebody can buy individual units, but when they're not there, it goes into the pool. There's a declaration of covenants, we already have a draft of it ready to go, which, again, keeps the character of the resort, keeps the Chalmers in control of it, as the operators and managers of it, they will own all of the amenities, maintain everything in there, and it sets up rules for how the individuals who stay on there or rent the units out, how those are all governed, what they can and can't do with their individual lots.
And that's going to include adding additional structures and/or putting a doghouse on your piece, or?
Yes.
I'm thinking River Ranch, I'm thinking what I've seen transpire, if you will, at some other RV parks that become actually their own, so I own the property, I can do what I want kind of attitude. So, do we, and I know those covenants would be governed by the state, correct? Just like the homeowners?
No, it's not like a condo association where the state has to sign off on it, these are POA documents. These are POA documents, Property Owners Association documents. But they want to keep it a nice facility because, I mean, that's what they have to sell. That, that is what they're marketing it as, and they don't want individuals to be able to, you know, put up clotheslines or sheds or whatever. In addition, as a part of the approval, the, the restrictions in the approval before you tonight talk about what kinds of things can be on there. And there's a list of, of, of structures such as, you know, pergolas and tiki bars and outdoor kitchens and that kind of thing. And my understanding from staff is that when we come forward for the final site plan approval, because this is a preliminary tonight.
Right.
When we come forward with the final site plan approval and the, and the plaid approval, we'll have to spell out in more specificity the list of what those things are that we want to have as available structures.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm comfortable with today what you're telling me. My concern is down the road.
Right.
What happens then and who's going to restrict it and who's going to, if it's not documented within our approval? That's why I'm asking these questions, so that it maintains what they're desiring forever, if, for lack of a better way of putting it, whether it changes hands or whatever else down the road.
That makes sense, but, but remember, there's, there's kind of a self-perpetuating nature to it because just like in a community that has HOA covenants, after the developer walks away many years later, those HOA covenants are still there and, you know, individuals can't do things that would violate the covenants because those community covenants are there. They can be changed, but they're very hard to change. In this case, you have a POA that's really even harder to change because you have all the individuals in there, so it's always hard to change HOA covenants because the majority of the individuals have to change it. But here you have another layer because you have a supermajority manager that controls it and wants to maintain their brand and keep it looking nice. So you have both the, the county restrictions and you have the, the POA covenants and you have the management company all wanting to maintain a certain product. But the hard and fast rule of 180 days, I think, keeps it from having somebody moving in there and making it
Well, I'll, I'll differ with you because I'm watching one right over here on Jenkins Road that's, the clotheslines have started going up, the dog pin, the, the dog house has gone out, and it was only supposed to be 180 days. So I'm not questioning them, and that's why I'm asking these questions, so that it stays preserved the way they were anticipating and want it to be.
Right.
And what we can do to help because if it, my fear is if it's just going to stay like under a homeowners association, usually those start dispersing and going away and nobody wants to go fight with their neighbors, so they're not going to go, go clean this up or, you know, in most cases.
I actually checked the resolution for that, the KOA campground before the hearing tonight because I understood you had a question about that. That one, that one does not have 180-day restriction.
No, I found that out, yeah.
That's something that was discussed in the approval process, but it does not have a, has a time period restriction.
And that's part of why I'm concerned on, okay.
Yeah, understood.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone from the audience like to speak on this subject matter? Mr. Bennet?
Chairman Mitchell, members of the board. As a follow-up to Commissioner Zdowski's inquiry, we do understand that tourism taxes would be due for the rental periods by non-owners of the individual sites.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Good evening, sir. Please identify yourself.
Yeah, my name is Dennis Jerkowitz. I own the property on 6701 Indrio Road, just steps from where this development's going to go in. And I hadn't planned on speaking, but I have concerns with having hundreds of new neighbors right next to my, my property. With traffic flow and campfires and parties and stripping out that piece of land. Those are my concerns. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been so long. Did we do quasi-judicial on this? Did we?
Mm-hmm.
We did? Okay. Are there any other questions of staff?
I just want to clarify something. I, I, when I talked to staff, we clarified that it was going to be a concrete wall along with the buffer with the landscaping stuff, correct?
So after our meeting, there was a discussion, there's actually not a masonry wall that's required. Our Land Development Code requires that a masonry wall or opaque, opaque buffer be provided between non-residential and residential uses with, sorry, non-residential or residential uses or structures. The parcel to the south is, does not have any residential structures and is designated as agricultural grazing land. And that holds true with the property to the east.
Thank you.
So will that be a buffer, like the gentleman who just spoke, will that be a buffer for him being created?
So there is a property on the southeast corner. Leave, let me see if we can pull up an aerial. So the property just to the southeast corner of the subject parcel is a residential property that has a land use of single-family development with the tips of the, the properties touching right there. But the property to the east, the U-shaped parcel, and the parcel to the south are both agricultural and the land use is designated for grazing, cattle grazing.
Where is that gentleman's property, though?
I, I'm not sure.
Would you mind coming back up here, sir? Because I want to know the answer to this.
Thank you. That property is that historic Crayola, they call it Crayola property, Edwin Benny's house. It's five acres. There's a barn there that's, is the original Crayola red barn. It's a historic piece of land. My concern is everything coming in, pushing all that right onto our property. That space between my property and the RV park is not that big. I'm not sure what acreage it is. Maybe five.
But is there a buffer there? That's what I'm asking. Is there a buffer created for him?
There is a 10-foot landscape buffer on the east side of the subject parcel.
What kind of landscape?
So that's this. If you look at that, too.
Do you know how many acres it is between that, between the properties, Chris?
How many? I'm sorry?
Do you know approximately how many acre, can you get back to that picture, please? So I know that on their, on the applicant's property, it's 10-foot of the buffer. And then the space from that property line to where theirs is, how many acres is that in between?
I, I don't have that figure in my head.
Okay.
It's about five.
I believe it's approximately five.
Okay, so it's five acres?
I don't know that for sure.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Come up and identify yourselves, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Wayne Bennett, property owner. If Chris will pull it back up. I know that my view is negated by the trees that are on my property, but by the same token, if I want to be there on my property, I have to view this across this open cow pasture. So I, I want to, I want to make sure that no matter what, the future lies for my home. And we own 40 acres there. I have 1,200 feet of frontage that faces across that cow pasture, right to this parcel that we're speaking of. Okay? And I have, I have concerns, and I raised my concerns at the planning meeting, and Mr. Nolan, he addressed it. Part of it, anyway. That if I want to be on the back of my property, I don't want to look across there and see this. I really don't. I'd like to know that there's going to be some type of an obscure buffer there. And I believe the cow pasture that's being referenced, I keep my cows on it now, but that cow pasture, I think, is somewhere in the future land use at nine units per acre. That's pretty heavy residential. So if that ever transpired, which I don't know if it will or not, but if it ever did, certainly there should be some type of buffer there against that. So the landscape buffer thing is an issue to me. Also, I heard that there's 5,000 existing trees on his property. They're going to preserve 3,000 inches of that. If you divide that by a 24-inch tree, that's 120 trees from 5,000. I know that the man wants to try and keep the place nice. I was in the site development business. I know what roads are. I know what utilities are. Anytime that you make an improvement on a piece of property, a tree doesn't coexist with it. So, you know, not to make light of the situation, but this is a pretty heavily constructed site when it's finished. Also, I know they've got an existing preliminary site plan, and I don't see on it a 10-foot landscape buffer, although there's a buffer with a winding trail. Some of the lots are getting real close. I think that needs to be considered, that there is a landscape buffer there. Existing trees can coexist there and things like that without encroaching on these private, now, I understand, private properties with the lands, with the trails and things like that.
The way I see it, you have a buffer on the east side and the south side, correct?
Yes, sir. But if you look at those plans and scrutinize them, it's very narrow. I don't see how it can make much of a buffer difference. From the back of my property, like I said, I do have trees. I've tried to preserve everything I can, but you, the whole back of my property is open to that development. So that's an issue. I don't, I'd like to know what size culvert that is under Kings Highway that all the drainage is going to go through, which includes the existing property, project that's here. It also includes the property to the east of there to a certain extent, to the, well, I don't, I don't know. It may break right there, honestly. I know there's a ditch all the way through there, but it may break to Taylor Dairy Road and to Kings Highway. Just need to make sure there's enough drainage there that it won't be backing up on people. I've heard the, Tom Lucido's man here, not Tom Lucido, Aaron Stanton from MBV, talk about their traffic studies and turning around a fire truck there. My concern was at the meeting was that we're going to have people coming from the north off Interstate 95. They got to cross three lanes of traffic to get into that turn lane with an RV, probably pulling an SUV. Make this U-turn and go back, and the same thing is going to happen when they go north if they decide to go to the turnpike, to go to the Keys or something. That's another issue. And also with private ownership, how are you going to restrict these people from cutting these trees down or doing what they want at a later date? I think Commissioner Hutchinson was addressing that. Needs to be some kind of a covenant tied to it, that they can't do that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else from the public like to speak on this subject matter? Mr. Dovins or anybody, would you like to speak on behalf of what you just heard or you're good?
Now, we'll just address any questions you may have.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, I heard from a couple citizens and I just want to know, you know, I, I know you and I know that when you bring projects, you work with the, with the, you know, with the neighborhood, which is important to me and I'm sure it's important to you and to the people that want to build this. So my thing is, you want to address some of their concerns. Will there be a burn? Will there be the questions that they brought up?
Sure. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, Brian Nolan.
Thank you.
Lucido and Associates. So the goal, as we all like to say, the goal is to maintain as much of the vegetation as possible. Normally, I get squeamish when developers say that, and we've all, we all know what happens. Jim is a little bit different animal in that regard, in that he owns his own landscape company and has a vested interest in not clearing the land vis-à-vis the commercial out parcel. That's not going to be touched until such time a site plan comes through and it's going to be developed. We did wrap the east and south property lines with a four-foot-tall, at time of planting, buttonwood shrub with multiple layers of understory, trees of varying heights and species. It's a, it's a fairly significant landscape buffer. Rarely we, we line a, a site with a four-foot-tall hedge. To blaze through with a wall or a fence is going to really just detract from everything that Jim and Kerry are wanting to do, and that's preserve, you know, the, the perimeter. To cut a footer through there, it's just going to totally denude everything, and then we're just going to have to come back and backplant it. You know, heat glare off the, you know, it's just, I think what we're doing is, is about the best, is about the best effort that we can, that we can do.
Mr. Chair. And can you reiterate the covenants regarding the suggestion that owners would be able to cut down trees well after the fact, because they'll own their own lots?
Well, that was my next question, but it's fine. We've seen this before. We give conditional use permits. Once they get their CO, things change.
But, Mr. Chair, I have a question. It's probably a question for ERD. I, I don't know this, but I would think that we can't even cut down a tree on our own property without going, like, if I'm going to clear my property, I have to go through ERD. So I would think that this would comply to the same rule, that if they were going to go in there and do any clearing on their property, that they would have to go through and get clearance through ERD, make sure there's no go-for-tort resist or whatever they're going to climb on the property. Is that, is that correct, Corey?
Chairman Mitchell, Commissioner Townsend, members of the board. With the platted lots, I would anticipate that it would be the owners' responsibility to secure authorization from the POA and file a vegetation or tree removal permit with our Environmental Resources Department. They would then refer to the approved landscape plan and tree mitigation plan. If they are removing a protected tree, they would then be responsible to offset it. There are some exceptions for single-family platted lots of record that are developed in our community, but for a non-residential development like this, that is also a planned development, those guidelines would, would be on a case-by-case basis to adhere to this overall plan.
And, and to add to that, I mean, they wouldn't have the right to just go in and cut what they want on their individual lots. Again, these lots are governed by the POA. The planting that's there would be subject to the, the POA covenants and, and certainly anything that's on the site plan that's, or part of the landscaping plan has to remain. In addition, I was just talking to Mr. Nolan. In addition to the perimeter buffer, you also have to remember that there's trees on, on these various lots. And the, the buffer, if you count the areas on the lots where the RV isn't, you know, between the back of the RV pad and the lot, that's another 15 to 25 feet, varies from lot to lot. But that's in addition to the perimeter buffer. So in addition to the perimeter buffer, there's additional buffering with the planting on the site, and the individuals do not have the right to go in and just clear their own lots. Even if they could go and get the permit from the county for that, they would not be allowed to do that under the POA covenants. They're allowed to do certain things within their lots. That's not one of the things they can do with them.
Thank you. That takes some of my algeto away. Thank you. It does.
Mr. Chair. There is one final question as the gentleman was walking away from the stormwater standpoint. The culvert, is there a suggested engineered size of the culvert that will be draining into the canal off of Kings? And then if so, is there any criteria for, I think you used the term backing up and flooding any area to the south?
Well, we've designed the lake to accommodate for all the runoff Well, we've designed the lake to accommodate for all the runoff for the site. When we design the outfall, when we do the final design for the construction plans for that pipe, we're showing a 24-inch pipe right there. Based on the outfall amount, that's pretty adequate. When we get into final design of the plans, if we need to upsize that, we can.
And I guess my final question, so we can move this on, is, Mr. Dobbins, you said something to the effect that this is a, coming for final site plan review. This is a preliminary, and so there will be another discussion for any final provisions that will be done offline, or will that be done by the Planning and Development Services Director?
I believe that comes back for another hearing, correct?
This would be a final minor site plan that would go before the Planning and Development Services Director. So this would not come back before the board. Though the plat would come back before the board as a consent agenda item following the approval of the final minor site plan.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one more, and just somebody explained to me. I've stared at this little map up here for a while. But what is the, what is the connection going over to that's on the east side? On the road connection, you've got your entrance to the east. Why do we even have that? Is that a requirement of the TVC for connectivity?
The TVC does require that we provide future connectivity between parcels and adjacent properties. So this would just be, provide a connectivity to a potential future development on the east parcel.
Well, that's about the most ridiculous.
Yeah, that's why we need to.
I mean, he's got it gated up here on the one, going the emergency, and I'm going to leave an open access point down here to a vacant piece of property at this time. I would prefer you just close that off. And if there ever becomes something on that side to show, then it can be put in there at that time. But to leave it there like it is, I think you're asking for trouble.
I would concur. I would actually like to see the TVC go away.
I believe that's coming up for some discussion.
We would have no objection to closing that off. It was, it was being done to meet the TVC requirement.
I understand that, but I don't think it foresaw seeing connecting interconnected a resort park
Right.
to something else without it being a road, which I don't see that happening either.
Any other questions? The will of the board.
Public hearing, please.
Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else that hasn't spoken like to speak on this subject matter? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. It's the will of the board.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and go out there on, with all the comments that were made by the staff, I mean, by the board today, I'll go ahead and move forward on the preliminary. But I'm going to request a copy of the covenants so that we all have a better understanding prior to it coming back for us for final.
And I'll second the motion.
Does everybody understand the motion?
Question. I just want to make sure that the motion and the second are agree to the conditions that were outlined prior to.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Chair, may I clarify something?
Sure.
For the condition of approval, so it would be removal of this eastern connection and the, the covenants that you would like to, to see, that would be prior to minor site plan approval or prior to plat approval?
It goes back to before the planning first, right?
So the, the final site plan approval would be approved administratively by the planning director? And the plat would have to come back before the Board of County Commissioners as a consent agenda item following the minor site plan approval?
I want to see it beforehand.
So prior to minor site plan approval?
Yeah.
I think we all understand that, prior to site plan approval.
I think that will help make sure everything gets eliminated out.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That'll, I think that'll calm a lot of people's apprehension. Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a quick break. We'll return at 8:30. Okay, we're going to resume when we're back to 9B4, which is the Don Martinez petition to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map. And I see Jody.
Good evening, Chair Mitchell and members of the board. For the record, Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting Agenda Item 9B4 and 9B5, two petitions submitted by McCarthy and Associates on behalf of Don Martinez for an amendment to the future land use from residential urban to industrial. I apologize, it's residential suburban to industrial and rezone the official zoning atlas from RS4 to industrial light. Both items require a separate public hearing and action by the board. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, an advertisement for this public hearing was placed in the local newspaper on Friday, June 24, 2022. In addition, notices were mailed to adjacent property owners located within 500 feet of the subject property. And one sign was placed on the subject property. The petitions pertain to a 1.22-acre vacant parcel located on the west side of 25th Street in Fort Pierce. The property immediately to the south of the subject property parcel is zoned industrial light and recently received development approvals for a vehicle storage facility. The property to the northwest is zoned as a planned, non-residential development zoning has, zoning, which, and has received approvals to develop a 5,000-square-foot religious facility which has expired. 25th Street is state-owned and maintains arterial roadway, which is suitable to serve light industrial uses. The applicant received conceptual approval from the Florida Department of Transportation, and recommended access should be from the west connecting to the south 25th Street turnout. Designated future land use for this subject property is residential urban, which allows up to five units per one acre. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to reclassify the land use category to industrial. The subject property is currently designated in the RS4 zoning district. The proposed rezoning to industrial light is consistent with the proposed future land use category of industrial. In accordance with the public notices of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, notices and responses forms were mailed to the adjacent property owners located within 500 feet of the property. Of the 35 mailed notices, the Planning and Development Services received no responses. On May 19, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as its local planning agency, held a public hearing and voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval for both petitions. The proposed future land use map amendment conforms to the standards of review as set forth in Section 11.06.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the official, I'm sorry, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The proposed rezoning conforms to the standards of review as set forth in Section 11.06.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development and is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Official Zoning Atlas Amendment to reclassify the zoning from RS4 to the industrial light zoning designation. This concludes staff's presentation, and we do have the applicant in the audience if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions of the applicant or staff? Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this subject matter?
Good evening. Mike McCarty, McCarty and Associates, Land Planning and Design, representing the owner of this property. I just want to state on the record, I have provided the appropriate notification requirements and postage of the sign for the hearing and provided it notarized and signed. I just want to submit it on the record.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Really don't have a whole lot to add, but while I'm here, I'll add something. You know, 25th Street, this end of 25th Street is changing. And, and being an over 200-foot right-of-way and some of the industrial uses in that area, it's more than appropriate to have industrial on this property and allow the opportunity for uses other than residential along a major arterial highway throughout our community. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do you have any questions of staff? Seeing none?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend.
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend. We have a second by Commissioner Bart. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair Mitchell, if we could open up two public hearings, one for the land use and one for the rezoning?
Well, the next one I will because that's quasi-judicial also, so I want to keep them separate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I spoke with staff. Staff.
Staff only.
Myself also staff. Okay, now we'll get to number five. Thank you.
She's already made. Well, wait, he's going to open up.
Oh, I knew that.
Open and close public hearing on that one.
That's correct. We're going to open this to public hearing on number five. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Now I'll entertain.
Ah, move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zidowski, a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you, Chair.
Number six, petition by Meritage Homes of Florida LLC.
Good evening again, Chair Mitchell and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with Planning and Development Services Department. And on my right is Corey Benton, our Planning Manager with the Planning Services Development Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting Agenda Item 9B6, a petition submitted by Coulter and Haring to modify the post-development order, the reserve DRI use threshold to add 101 dwelling units to the 2,900 residential units, extending the total maximum allowance of 3,001 units. The original DRI impact proposed, the original DRI proposed 4,100 dwelling units. In accordance with the public notices outlined in Section 11.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, an advertisement for the public hearing was placed in a local newspaper on Friday, June 24, 2022. The proposal being presented this evening is located within the reserve DRI. As seen in this map, the reserve DRI is identified in red and is situated to the east of Glades Cut Off Road, west of Interstate 95, and north of Crotown Parkway. The reserve consists, the reserve DRI consists of approximately 2,680 acres within the jurisdiction of both St. Lucie County and the city of Port St. Lucie. The portion of the DRI within the county contains a golf course, residential, office, and commercial uses. The industrial is located within the city's jurisdiction. The total approved development included 5,000, 500,000 square feet of industrial, 2,900 residential dwelling units, 150,000 square feet of retail commercial, 174,105 square feet of office space, and 310 hotel rooms. This amendment proposes to modify the development program in the DRI development order to convert 64,264 square feet of general commercial slash retail use and replace it with 101 additional residential units and 1,000, 103,005 square feet of remaining office use. The 500,000 square foot of industrial is not proposed to change. The amendment also proposes to change language in Condition 51 in the ordinance of, in the recent development order regarding placing among the different uses in such a manner that would not increase traffic trips. Currently, the condition allows the developer to implement the matrix through a planned unit development zoning within the proportion of the DRI. The amendment would allow the county and city staff to utilize the matrix conversion if there is a mutual agreement. Any conversions would be required to be documented in the biannual report. The conversion matrix table is proposed to be expanded to include a minimum and maximum for each use. The proposed changes to the development program include adding residential units and office space square footage within the portion of the DRI in St. Lucie County. The additional office space square footage is to incorporate the previous construction of the St. Lucie County School Board District offices on Brandywine Lane. The 500,000 square foot of industrial entitlements located within the city's jurisdictions are not proposed to be changed. On June 27, 2022, the city of Port St. Lucie City Council held a public hearing and voted to approve the proposal, proposed amendment. This petition conforms to the standards of review outlined in St. Lucie County Land Development Code and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policy of St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the 11th Amendment for the development order known as the Reserve Development Regional Impact Perren's DRI as outlined in Resolution 2022-166. This ends staff's presentation.
Any questions of staff? This is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. It's the will of the board.
We have approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to number six. Seven, I apologize.
Chair Mitchell and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. I'll be presenting Agenda Items 9B7 and 9B8, two petitions submitted by Coulter and Haring on behalf of Meritage Homes for an amendment to the future land use from residential suburban and commercial to residential urban and rezoned to a planned unit development with a conceptual preliminary site plan. Ordered development of 99-lot, single-family subdivision to be known as the Azalea Land Unit Development within the reserve DRI. Both items require a separate public hearing and action by the board. In accordance to the public notices requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, an advertisement for this public hearing was placed in the local newspaper on Friday, June 24, 2022. In addition, notices were mailed out to adjacent property owners located within 500 feet of the subject properties. And two signs were placed on the subject properties. The petition pertains 31.78 acres of abandoned golf course practice facility. The subject site is located within the PGA Reserve, located west of Commerce Center Drive, south of the Baron Office Complex, formal PGA Learning Center, and north of PGA Verano. The designated future land use for this subject property are, is commercial and residential suburban. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to reclassify the land use category to, from, to residential urban. This land use allows up to five units per acre. The subject property is currently zoned as a commercial, general, and a planned The subject property is currently zoned as a commercial general and a planned non-residential development zoning district. The proposed rezoning to planned unit development, the applicant is proposing to rezone to a planned unit development zoning district. The preliminary site plan demonstrates the overall site layout, deflicting the 99 single-family lots within the Azalea subdivision. The applicant justified the proposed plan would increase the surrounding land value and homeownership opportunities, and is compatible with the surrounding uses as they are mostly single-family residents located within a planned unit development. Since a great portion of the reserve recreation area is composed of the golf course, Azalea would provide a dense cluster of single-family homes to provide more housing to a relative sprawled development. Also, since it's close to the St. Lucie Boulevard, St. Lucie West Boulevard and I-95 corridor, residents would have a ease in reaching their destination without causing significant traffic impacts on the surrounding areas, especially with the four-lane expansion of St. Lucie County West, St. Lucie, St. Lucie West from the Roundabout to I-95. The main entrance is located on the south, on the South Commerce Center Drive. The project will be gated, will be a gated entrance. The north entrance is designated for the emergency access only. The access has been approved by the St. Lucie County Fire Department. The developer will be providing activities and recreations throughout the site's design while maintaining a 35% open space requirement. Additionally, the Azalea PUD will be preserving the 3.4-acre stormwater management lake in the center of the development. This lake is designated to ensure proper drainage and runoff flows of the site to prevent flooding and any other potential issues that could arise with the change in drainage pattern. The lake will also have a 24,627 square foot latatorial zone with a native vegetation, which will serve as a natural habitat for a small native wildlife, as well as the upland transition zone to buffer the latatorial zone from the adjacent residents. The existing lake on the west and south portion of the site is not included within the project boundaries and will remain unaffected by this development. This exhibits, identifies the planned design of the I-95 overpass improvements. The Florida Department of Transportation undergoing improvements to the interstate overpass bridge, which commenced on fall of 2021, with an expected completion date by the summer of 2023. The cost of these improvements is expected around 18 point, 18.3 million, with funds contributed by Coulter, Verano, and grants procured by the Florida Department of Transportation and by transportation planning organization. The scheduled project precludes the, for infrastructure improvements and the addition of a eastbound driveline, driveline. In accordance to the public notices, in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, notices and responses forms were mailed to the adjacent property owners located within 500 feet of the subject property. Of the 82 notices mailed out, the Planning and Development Services received a total of seven not in favor of the proposed project. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on Wednesday, April 13, 2022, after providing mailed invitations to several hundred residents. On May 19, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, held a planned public hearing and voted unanimously to forward recommendations for approval for both petitions. The proposed future land use amendment conforms to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Florida statute, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the future land use amendment. The proposed planned, the proposed PUD rezon and preliminary site plan conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Sections 11.06.03 and 11.02.07, and is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies as set forth in the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the Azalea unit, the Azalea Plan Unit Development rezon and preliminary site plan, subject to the following outlined within the Resolutions 2022-123. This concludes staff presentation. We do have a representative from Coulter &amp; Hearing that will present a small presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board of County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Dan Soro with the land planning firm of Cottler &amp; Hearing. Pleased to be here this evening. I'd like to enter into this presentation for both agenda items, the land use change and the PUD rezoning. Thank you, staff, for, for the presentation. Have, have just a few things to highlight, and staff's been great to work with. We've had some contractual obligations at a really strict timeline, and pleased to be here before you this evening presenting this application. Here with me this evening is, is, is folks from Meritage and, let me just see, Mr., Mr. Dante Fragaria and Ms. Maria Bolivar. Also here with us is our civil engineer, Mr. Kenneth Rao, and our traffic engineer, Mr. Sean McKenzie. If you have any questions after the presentation, any one of these teammates will be able to, to answer them for you. This application before you really is, is a project that makes good use of the overall development. This is Meritage's first project in St. Lucie County. They've been in the Treasure Coast for, for a while, but first one in St. Lucie County. They do have a follow-up application for a different site off US-1 coming before this board and staff, hopefully in the next few months, but this is their first one. This slide shows really how future residents will access the site. You've got some of the, the folks coming from Crotown Parkway to the south that is, that's going to get off at the Publix and head north on Commerce Center Drive, and then, as Ms. Nitwick just mentioned, the overpass, which is being expanded on St. Lucie West, which dies at the, dead ends at the Clock Tower site, folks are going to come and use both of those east-west connections through St. Lucie County after getting off of I-95. The, the subject site, a little bit more of a zoomed-in version, shows the parcel outlined in yellow, and really, our, our neighbors are commercial in nature. This is where the original DRI concentrated a lot of the commercial uses. In fact, as, as Ms. Nitwick pointed out earlier, we did have our community meeting at the Hilton Hotel, right?
She's not Mrs. Net, Ms. Netwick anymore.
Ms. Kugler. Sorry.
She got married.
She's a married woman.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Kugler pointed out, we had a number of residents from the, the, the community attend, 43 residents, I think, in total, a lot of positive feedback, a lot of, a lot of good discussion, many of your staff attended as well, and, and were, were, we were happy to have the meeting with them. The, the next slide really shows the gist of what we're asking for tonight. The land use that's on the subject site is general commercial, and, and the zoning is also general commercial. So your code right now prohibits any kind of residential use within the land use of commercial or the zoning of commercial. So we want to change the land use to residential, then also the zoning, which is planned non-residential, we want to change that to residential also, to allow for these 99 lots. This was something that was way back at the original DRI when it was, when it was being This slide does show the existing land use that's, that's in place, and I've been working in this DRI for probably, you know, a couple of years now, and, and, you know, there's been all kinds of different uses for this subject site. One of the uses that we've heard were apartments and RV parks and any of the commercial uses, and, and that's not what the residents wanted. The residents really wanted something that was more compatible, and that's what we've brought to them. We've brought to them single-family homes, which is what they've asked for and what Meritage is, is really looking to, to build and develop here, something that we felt was, was really compatible. So we've got to change the land use from red to yellow, and then the zoning also has got to change from red and purple to yellow to allow the 99 single-family lots, consistent with the rest of the PGA Reserve, which you see as yellow around the screen as well. The, the zoning code of St. Lucie County really requires a PUD development if you're going to have any lot sizes less than 75 feet. The whole DRI of, of the reserve is a large PUD. There's actually three PUDs. They've gone to three different lot sizes within that development, so to stay consistent with what the DRI already had approved, we're filing a PUD. There's a lot of benefits to the PUDs. You have a master stormwater system. What it does is it also takes the open space and the drainage that would be required on each lot and puts it into a common area so that a lot of the members, a lot of the residents of the HOA can, can allow, and it also has a centralized water and sewer infrastructure system that, you know, gets you away from the well and septic that would be, or could be on a, on a, on a non-PUD-type development. This is our site plan. It has been submitted to PDS. It's currently under review now. We are showing 99 lots. Originally, we had 100 lots shown on this site plan, but we've reduced that, and this does show our final site plan. As, as Ms. Kugler mentioned, we are showing the primary access to the bottom of the slide. That is an existing curb cut along Commerce Center Drive. It's the access to the maintenance facility, the golf shop that's already in place now. There doesn't need to be any improvements to the median. The turn lane is already there, so we're accessing that as our main point of ingress/egress to the community. And then the pink dot towards the top of the screen is also an existing dot with the Jeremiah Barron Commercial Office Campus that's already in place. We're going to keep that as emergency only, and it's, and it'll be gated as well. The next slide does show the, the passive recreation area in green, and you can see, you know, with a site this small, you really want, you're not going to have a big clubhouse or any kind of centralized pool. You know, usually, you, you look to do 200 lots or more with some of the more amenitized areas for the clubhouse and, and campuses. It's really a small project for Meritage, only, only 99 lots. And then we do have the centralized mail kiosk, which is shown kind of close to the entrance. This is a gated community, so it will be fully secure. You will need, you know, a gate card to enter into the community or to call one of the residents. This slide here, coming up next, does show that the existing drainage that is currently on site, there's a flow-through drainage easement that collects all the stormwater management from, from I-95 and brings it through the site and outfalls it into that big lake to the left of the screen. So we had to reduce one of the lots going from 100 to 99 to facilitate this site plan, and we are keeping some of the extra drainage easements in place for, for the site. That central lake area is something new, and, and what that does is it actually captures all the stormwater runoff into the center part of the site, treats it, let all the sediment nutrients fall to the ground, and it's cleaning up the water before it exits into the existing Lake Three. So it's, it's really an improvement of, of what's there today. We did take, you know, that, that into concern when designing the site plan. We were at one time thinking about making it a park. The northern part of the site plan is highlighted. We put extra landscaping in there to buffer it from the office campus to the north. It is where the location of our lift station is located, and we do have some passive sidewalking and, and recreational trails with some enhanced landscaping, and it does show the existing lake in that section. Again, this is the southern access that's already existing along Commerce Center Drive. Shows that the existing berm that's in place now will be, it is within Meritage property. It will be enhanced with landscaping and kept in perpetuity, so that, that's going to remain. And then as you, you come into our formal entry to the south, we are showing some enhanced landscaping also. We didn't want our car lights shining across the lake into the neighbors' houses that are already kind of south of that existing lake, so we enhanced the landscape plan to screen some of those car lights and, and some of those conditions. That was one of the things we heard at the community meeting from some of the residents, so we're, we're addressing that foremost and, and upfront. And then this next slide, Commissioners, really, really shows the signage that we're proposing along Commerce Center Drive as kind of our main entry feature to let the residents know where they are. And then when you look at compatibility of, of the surrounding uses, we are proposing all 99 lots to be a 50-foot-wide lot, large lot with 125-foot depth. It is exactly the same as the lots across the lake that's existing in PGA Reserve DRI. You can see taken right from the property appraiser's website. You show the, the 50-foot lot located directly adjacent from where I just showed you where we have that enhanced landscaping to the north. The last item, which was, was just approved, I think we can zip over this because the development order was just, was just approved, so thank you for that. It is a simultaneous increase and decrease in traffic. We're taking the commercial away and putting residential in there, so it, it makes a lot of sense. There was a matrix that allowed us to do that. But I did want to talk briefly about Commerce Center Drive. This is, this has come up recently. You can see the area highlighted in pink on the screen that shows the extent from the Clock Tower down to the edge of our site. This was, you know, this is not something new. It's been on the books since 1998. It says that it was dedicated to St. Lucie County, but it's the maintenance responsibility of the HOA. You know, it was, it was signed back in, in, in 1998 and then recorded shortly thereafter. The Meritage portion of that road is, is shown there, and it's roughly, you know, 1815 linear feet of frontage along that whole parcel. So that's, that's the Meritage frontage of that roadway, and, and these are some images of that roadway. So on the top left, you see the existing berm, and I understand that some of the, the reserve HOA have been, you know, maintaining that even though it's on the Meritage property. So they've been maintaining that, some on their own, and then the bottom shows the median landscaping, which, which looks really nice, and they've been maintaining that as well as required per the plat back in 1998. So, you know, as a good faith effort and as just wanting to work and, and be part of the community, Meritage is, is really proposing for this board, you know, a couple of options that we'd like you to consider. One is that, you know, per the property management company, there's an assessment given to each of the residents. There's about 2,500 residents that get this assessment. It's $52 per unit, per year, so if we were to, you know, be assessed that same amount, that would be one thing that, you know, we would offer up, and then, or the other thing that we would like to offer up is, you know, we'll maintain the berm on our side. We're going to landscape it, we'll maintain it, we'll keep that in perpetuity, we'll pressure wash the sidewalk, and we'll also take that, you know, 1918 linear feet of the median plantings and maintain those, the landscape, maintain the irrigation as, you know, as an effort to work with the HOA and take some of that responsibility from them. You know, clearly, it's up to the direction of the board how you guys want to proceed, but, you know, that's something that we felt was showing, you know, our, our good faith effort to, you know, work with the county and work with, work with the residents. So lastly, this is my last slide. You know, the low-density residential project is really what was asked for on this site. Meritage Home Builders is, you know, a, a, a good developer who wanted to be here on this site. It meets the intent of the Comprehensive Plan. The land use needs to change from commercial to residential to facilitate this. Your staff recommends approval, Planning and Zoning Board recommend approval, and we'd look for your favorable support tonight to, to move forward also. On behalf of Meritage and our entire team, we thank you for your time. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I just want to say thank you because the reserve did inherit this. They didn't sign up for this. You're correct in all your, it was in 1998, and they have graciously taken care of it. And it just, in my opinion, is a public road. It's used by a lot of the people coming from the public to bypass, and the burden has been put on PGA, so I want to say thank you, and I'm sure the residents are going to be happy to hear that you are willing to step up and be accountable for some of this, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I too, when you came to my office, I was deeply concerned about some of the challenges that, that you faced, and you've been here before with this same property with a much greater and more difficult project. It was not acceptable to, to the neighbors, and it ended up where it was going. Here, it looks like the developer has... Here, it looks like the developer has really a community spirit. And I want to thank Dante and Maria for having coming in and talked to me. And I suggested during that conversation that participating, it shouldn't be the burden, you know, for PGA generally. You're part of the total DRI. This is an opportunity to participate. I appreciated the, the suggestion of the same assessment as each of the other units. But the one thing I didn't hear, you talked about the, the maintenance, and I appreciate that, the one thing I didn't hear was the maintaining of the irrigation along that side, maintaining that to some level. Is that still an option, or did we talk about that?
It is an option, Commissioner, and I might have glanced over it in my presentation. It was included in there. So certainly, any heads break, any lateral lines, anything like that, that happens, you know, within that section, Meritage will be responsible for.
That's all my questions for now.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this subject matter? If you do, please come up and identify yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is George Saylor. I'm Vice President of the Board of Directors of PGA Village POA. And Ivan Summers was supposed to be here. He's our president. He sends his regrets. He's currently under the weather. I just want to say that we do have an interest in this development and that we've been discussing, we've had discussions with Meritage. They've been working with us. We also have a committee assigned from, you know, of residents to guide the board in making decisions about this. So we understand there's, there's issues to work through, but, you know, we, we plan to have communication with county staff and also with, with Meritage. Thank you.
Appreciate your words, sir. Anyone else from the community? Good evening, sir. Ma'am, you can step behind him if you're going to speak next.
Well, I didn't see her coming. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Hi, Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners. This is James Davis. I live in Island Point, which is 9204 Short Chip Circle, which happens to be right across the lake from where Meritage is looking at putting in these, this development. I myself don't have a problem with, with new development as long as it follows a lot of the guidelines that we have set forth. I moved here to this beautiful state five years ago. I left the Midwest. I still have my office in Ohio. I have an office here in Florida. Moved here just because of, one, I got tired of lousy weather. Plus, it's just a lot more pleasant down here. Even though my travels with my work, I'm gone between nine and 10 months out of the year. I have my wife and I raise my son here in, in PGA Village. When we decided to move down here, we spent 10 days running all over the state of Florida. And PGA was one of the last houses and developments that we looked at. We fell in love with this house, and we had a beautiful learning center that was across the street from us with this lake. My only concern with this going on right now is we chose this house for the view of the lake and for the peace and quiet. My fear is, on the map, they show the, like a mailbox location that was set forth, putting up some foliage there to block the headlights from coming across the lake. That is directly right next to the lake that's right across from our property. So my request is, and I went to the meeting, and I think it was in April, was to, what can you do to separate that property, Azalea, from Island Point? He mentioned that it's a gated community. They need a key card to get in. But once they're in, we have issues right now with people using that lake as a free-for-all to go fishing and do whatever they want to do. Our security has to stay on them to keep being removed. What's stopping those people that live in Azalea from just walking over into that lake and being on our property when it's not their property? So that's my concern, is to eliminate people who live there from just walking over into our, into our property area and the lake that we take care of as part of our HOA fees. Other than that, I didn't plan on saying anything, but I, I, I agree. I think it's, having more houses will help. But we have a lot of guidelines at PGA, and we, we were drawn to them when we decided to purchase our property, and we've abided by them as much as the noise ordinances and, and, and just the amount of people that live there and how everybody follows rules and regulations. And I'm hoping that if this development is approved, that they have similar guidelines that we have that have made our community great where it's at right now, and hoping that if they're going to expand, that they can copy the same, same kind of thing for us.
Mr. Sorrell, would you like to address that?
Let's, let him rebut at the end.
Okay. That's fine. He'll rebut at the end. I don't think it's a rebuttal, but.
Or, or comment.
Anybody else from the public? Good evening.
Well, I'm Betty Modell, and I live in PGA. And since I've stayed here all this night, I do want to say thank you to Kathy for understanding our burden and all of you commissioners, that I appreciate Meritage taking that particular strip. I think that'll be a big help. I, as you know, apparently wanted the burden taken perhaps off of PGA. But I guess the clock tower, we've been taking care of and everything, so that would continue. But I, I want to make sure that the part that Meritage is taking care of is their berm and the median strip. What about the other side bordering 95? You know, there is some vegetation and mowing and edging in sidewalks or whatever on that side. Is that included? I mean.
That's not what I negotiated.
It, it is.
It's not what I negotiated. I negotiated the, the side of the, actually where the homes are going to be, so the median and the berm and the irrigation, what I, but they're still here, so maybe we'll hear from them later on.
Good. So that's in question on that other side.
I think your question is there, and that they're going to come back and.
They're going to come back.
Okay.
Okay. So maybe you can consider that part, too, and we'll take care of the front. But I just was checking that that is a county road. Is that correct? And it goes up to the county-city border? So I'm, I'm curious, just as a resident, and I've been here since 2000. I grew up in West Palm Beach, third generation. And why are residents taking care of a county road?
This was negotiated in 1998 into the DRI. So that was a negotiation that that processed to actually take the road, but the maintenance is maintained by the DRI or PGA.
Right.
That's what was stated in the original opening line there.
True.
So I have a comment after we're done to address that suggestion.
Okay.
But after the fact.
Okay. Well, I just don't know that residents were in that negotiation, but it is revocable. So, I don't know. I'm just putting that on the table. And, because as a resident of PGA, I know I'm paying for that, and I know I'm paying county taxes. So, but I like the beauty of it, and I appreciate if we keep it like that. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public would like to speak on this subject matter? Again, is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. But do you want to address a couple of these issues that were brought up by the public, Mr. Sorrell?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. The resident, the second resident that spoke, I believe his name is Mr. James Davis. One of the ways that we can address some of his concerns of living across the lake is we can post no fishing, no trespassing, no water activities every, you know, 100 feet or so, so that our residents know that, you know, they can't be fishing or utilizing that lake for any purpose. We can include that in our HOA documents to further restrict any of our residents from, from, you know, participating in any fishing within that. There's about a 200-foot lake section in between the back-of-lot line from those lots south of the lake to where ours are going to start. So there is a pretty generous buffer, and we did increase the landscaping. It's been, you know, submitted as part of the Phase One Final Site Plan, which still has to come back before this board. So you get another opportunity to, to look at this site plan and the landscaping that we've proposed. And if Mr. Davis wants to come back, he'll see the, the enhancement to screen that centralized mail drop-off and pickup location that's, that's already been provided. As far as the, the resident number three that spoke, you know, it sounds like they're advocating for us to take the path of contributing our fair share of the $52 a month assessment like the rest of the community. And that way, it only hand, you know, it handles the median landscape, it handles the right side, it handles sidewalk, it handles everything. So if that's the path that, you know, the board decides for us to go down, we're agreeable to that. But if we're going to be maintaining the landscape, really what's, you know, in, in our control, the landscape, irrigation, the pressure washing, we would like to limit it to the median along Commerce Center Drive and our side of the berm and plantings. That's, that's directly going to be, you know, next to our, our community.
Any questions for Dan? I have one. I'm just going to play devil's advocate here. What happens if they don't adhere to the postings and the signs saying, hey, no fish in here?
Well, it, it, it's really similar to what they're dealing with now within the reserve HOA. I think, I think one of the residents said that, you know, some of their own residents or maybe, you know, people from the public stop there and, and fish. And I think it really becomes a trespassing issue for, for the sheriff's department to go and enforce those HOA restrictions.
Any other questions for Mr. Sorrell?
Not for Mr. Sorrell, but are you, Beller, are you representing the PGA to give an opinion on which of the two options are most appropriate for an agreement such as the 52, the assessment by each of the 100, 99 units? Or the, that Meritage taking care of the berm on their side of the road, the sidewalk and the median, as well as pressure washing and then maintaining the irrigation system along that section?
Okay. Kenneth George Saylor from PGA Village. No, we have not gotten, we have not made any final decision. We have not gotten to that point yet. Obviously, you know, we're dealing with the issue of, of maintenance of all of Commerce Center Drive from the clock tower circle down to the city-county line. There's a couple of issues here, but we haven't finalized anything. We, you know, we looked at the assessments, the current assessments for contributions to landscape and road maintenance for that section of Commerce Center Drive. I believe that's where that $52 per unit came from. So we, we need to revisit that. We've got other things that we have to look at in terms of the Commerce Center Drive. Our reserve plan, reserve funding plan currently shows us repaving that section of road to turn it back to a minute's penalty in 2025. And, and that's a big hit in our, it's, it's a high-cost item. So those are issues that we're going to be working on concurrently. So we, we haven't finalized anything yet. We're just beginning with those, discussing those issues.
While, while you're there, I just want to look over to Mr. Tipton and, and Mr. McIntyre and, and the board to, as, as this discussion comes up, we have a number of issues in the county where we have taken a road, but there's, there's an agreement with a developer or whoever was creating a community where they were to maintain the, the roadway. So this is just, this is countywide. We have other issues in other places. But I think it's important for us to, to discuss this particular scenario in a future informal meeting. There's so much research that has to go into this as to how it was developed, what would be the cost associated with it, what is, what would be the, you know, road and bridge input engineering? So there's a lot more to unpack here than we can do tonight if there's any consideration of, of changing how that road is maintained. So that's my first statement for that. We have to make a decision tonight. We have a condition that is being presented as a, as a solution, as a compromise, to meet the, the request of the PGA, whether it be a contribution of cash and still maintain it as it is, the way it's being maintained with their cash contribution, or for them to provide the actual physical labor and the landscaping on the berm and the median on their side of the road and that sidewalk, as well as the irrigation on that sidewalk. For me, just looking at it that way, I would probably go with having them maintain it as opposed to the contribution. But that's really, we have to make that decision tonight and from, in the short term, and maybe you can negotiate that down the road with, with the PGA. I'm not sure how to do that. But I'm, again, I'm grateful that they've actually stepped up because we had this conversation. And, you know, it was a deer in a head-look first, but then it was like, no, you want to be a community partner. So I really appreciate you guys stepping up to this thing. So for me, you know, I'm hearing a lot of positive comments. I think that this is a better product, product than anything else that has come before us in the last 14 years. And the proposal for the, for the contribution, I think, is generous and appropriate. So I'm going to support moving this forward. I just need to understand where I think I want to ask for the condition, whether it be the assess, the, the individual assessment for the, the particular home or for their offer to maintain the berm, sidewalk, main, pressure washing, the median and the irrigation. That's what they presented as part of a compromise. That seems to be more from a standpoint of value to PGA than the 52, 49 per unit per year.
I, I would need direction from the board because obviously it's a financial consideration for us. I can't waive any fee consideration because right now, the existing property owner is paying an assessment, as are the other retail commercial entities along that roadway. I believe some of the numbers that were came, that, that were come up, that came up for the $52 per unit per year, I think that was maybe based upon the cost of landscape maintenance and, and road maintenance or contributions to reserves for the road maintenance. I can't commit to that number. That's something that our board would have to look at and get more information.
All right. Well, then I, for me, and I, I close this hearing whenever you want. I just want to bring it back to the board. But as part of my thought process here, from a valuation standpoint for PGA, I think it's more valuable to them for the Meritage to take over the maintenance of the berm, the median, the pressure washing, the sidewalk, as well as the irrigation. And then we get this passed tonight, or whatever the board chooses to do, pass it or not. And then if they do pass it, then they have the opportunity to negotiate down the road as to what they had offered in the past. This will be all public record. It'll be in the minutes, then they can have that discussion after the fact. But I want to, I want to be able to get a condition tonight that, that moves this forward. And you'll be able to take this back to, to your board to open that line of communication. It seems to me that you've had a significant, good-quality conversation with, with the developer and their, and their representatives.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments?
I'll make a comment. So I, I agree, Commissioner Zadovsky. I was going to ask if we could, in the future, at an informal meeting, have the conversation. So to answer Mrs. Montiel's question, I, I do agree that when this was dedicated and it was given to you, I don't believe it would happen today. When this happened, it was a totally different board. It was a totally different time. I don't, I don't believe any of us sitting up here would allow that to happen today because of the procedures that are put in place. And you did inherit this. The residents of PGA inherited this. In my opinion, it is a county road. I think the county should be paying for this. And I think as development goes along that road, development should pick up their fair share of the development that butts up to that road. So I personally, myself, would like to have a conversation moving forward. Mr. Tipton, we, we do need to possibly look in the future of maintaining our fair share of this road because the public uses this road, not just the PGA residents.
I don't, you wanted to say something, Howard? I saw you pull the mic to yourself.
Sure. No, I just was going to confirm that we will absolutely have that as a workshop discussion for the board.
I'd like to see also Public Works maybe do a study on that road.
Well, while we're at it, then I want to take it before you do for one, you may as well do for all of them. So you've got a list of them. You've got Savannah Club, our, that group over there. It's the same type of situation. And here's the downside to it, and I'll play devil's advocate because I'm not totally against it. I'm not, I'm not there yet either way. We just. We just talked earlier tonight on Midway Road. That is a county-maintained, county-taken-care-of, and we're two years just getting landscaping. That is one of the selling factors to a lot of the homeowners' groups, that they want that so they have a better standard, a higher standard than what we would be doing. So again, I say that as devil's advocate to the whole situation, but if we're going to look at one particular one, we need to be looking at all of them, otherwise it's going to be a revolving door that's never, they can't be looked at individually. And you're right, Commissioner Townsend, I don't think I've ever, in my close to 20 years being up here, have ever seen a project came through where we've approved those types of agreements. Those were all done in a whole different era.
Right. But I think, like, example here, with the development that's going to be coming through, a lot of this can be carried on, hopefully with good partnerships with the developers coming forward, that it can be maintained that way, too. So I just think it's worth having that conversation.
And I'm, I'm not there.
To see the roads that are out there that we're supposed to be maintaining, what developments in the future to come, to maybe have that conversation.
Both you ladies make good points. Also, I have to say, this is quasi-judicial because we put seven with eight. So I'll just say that I met-
We have to be heard separately, Dante.
I'm sorry?
They still have to be voted on separately.
They had to be voted on separately, correct. But I'm just going to say, on the quasi-judicial one, eight, I met with Dan Sorrow, Dante, I'm going to mess up her last name.
For Gary.
Not an Irish name, I know that. And then I got a lot of emails and things from the community.
Mr. Chair, I met with the very same. I've got copies of all of them for the record if they need them.
Commissioner Bartz?
I've met with Dan Sorrow and staff. I'm ditto with you.
Okay.
I met with Mr. Sorrow as a client, Dante and Maria, and I've had several emails and phone messages from folks from PGA.
So we have to vote on these separately?
So you want to go back to item number seven? I'll make a motion to approve.
Sure. We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend on item seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, excuse me, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll move on to eight.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second with a comment. I just want to make sure-
Just a clarification on what you're going to do with that issue of the payment versus the actual physical improvement. I just wondered, I was going to ask a question, and I hesitate to do it, but I wonder, it seemed to me like this is coming back to the board at some point, right? So I wonder if we could keep a condition that allows an either-or, when it comes back to the board, then we'll get the HOA or whoever the group is to tell us which option they prefer. So I thought that I understood that they haven't really reviewed it yet, they haven't come to any conclusions. That would be an option as opposed to picking one. It seemed, though, that if you were going to have to pick, doing the actual improvements was, rather than paying, was the preferred alternative. So it's one that you could, as an option, if you weren't 100% sure of the HOA, you could push it down the road until you get, you know, have an either-or, and then get input from the HOA before it comes back, and then pick. If you're comfortable with going ahead with the, just the physical improvement, that seemed like, I saw a lot of nods out there, that people seemed to want the physical improvements as opposed to the money.
Mr. Chairman, that's why I wanted to clarify that while the Vice President was sitting there, so that we had something, it was a condition that they had to work on and work through. And so they can actually go back and have that discussion with the HOA or POA at PGA. And then they have great communication with the developer and their representative, and so that is exactly what I had intended.
Because I think they have a board meeting tomorrow, don't you? So do you want that included in the motion, Mr. McIntyre, of seven or eight? Because I was going to add it in eight.
It would be eight because that's the PNRD. It would be a condition that would require the developer either, A, to pay the fifty-some dollars per lot, or B, to actually physically improve and maintain the berm, the irrigation, the sidewalk pressure cleaning, that, and the median.
Alls I can say is the cost of labor and materials never goes down.
That was my second, if I was-
Yeah, so that was my motion. My motion was to do that with, in there.
With the option.
With the options.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for your participation.
Mr. Chairman, for the clerk, for clarifications, Townsend, Zadovsky, because I asked for that particular-
Yeah, I had it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I'm just trying to help out.
He's got it.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
I know your last name, Jody.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, boy.
We should be done in 15 minutes, right?
What's that?
We should be done in 15 minutes.
I didn't think much longer than that half hour.
I'm not going anywhere, I'm just standing up.
We're going to spend a lot of money on it, too.
Folks, we're going to continue our meeting, so if you want to have a conversation, please take it outside. Thank you so much. I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
We're ready to proceed.
All right. This is still a public hearing, and we're on to item number nine.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Mitchell and Commissioners. For the record, Ben Balser, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. Tonight, I'm presenting a county-initiated petition for land development code text amendments relating to solar generation stations. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notice for this item was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on Friday, June 23, 2022. The goal of this ordinance is to encourage clean energy operations by streamlining the approval process and revising the land development code to comply with Florida statute, which was amended to require solar generation facilities be listed as a permitted use in all agricultural zoning districts within unincorporated areas. The state has placed emphasis on clean energy production, and the county is currently one of the top producers of solar energy in the state, with six solar generation sites permitted over the last four years, including over 1 million solar panels. These next two slides provide a summary of the changes that are addressed in the draft ordinance, which were also included in the staff report for this item. The definition of solar generation station was revised within Chapter 2 of the code to conform with industry standards and is consistent with Florida statute. Current language in the land development code requires solar generation stations to obtain conditional use permit approval to locate within agricultural zoning districts, while the amended language eliminates this process and allows facilities to be a permitted use in all ag zoning districts in accordance with revised state statute. Additionally, the amendment would allow solar generation stations to be located within the research and education park overlay zone as a permitted use. The amendment to Section 7.10.28 Solar Energy would allow solar generation stations located within ag zoning districts to proceed through the minor site plan process rather than a major site plan, and eliminates solar panels from the maximum lot coverage calculation by buildings. Additionally, because solar generation stations are considered very low-traffic generators, the amendment looks to exempt new facilities located within ag zoning districts from providing paved access, and eliminates landscaping buffer requirements if the parcel is not adjacent to an established residential use. The amendment also updates land development code regulations to be consistent with the 2020 Florida Building Code, which increased the distance that rooftop solar panels are required to be from the edge of roof from two feet to three feet. To conclude, this ordinance addresses necessary amendments to align the county's land development code with the Florida statutes and the building code, as well as encourages clean energy production and streamlines the development review process. The Planning and Zoning Commission, at their June 16, 2022 meeting, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance as written. And staff recommends board authorization to schedule the second public hearing for this item at its July 19, 2022 meeting, beginning at 9:00 a.m. or as soon thereafter as may be heard. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I've got one question. You kind of glossed over this one, and it's on the bottom of your page, too. It's the fourth slide. Your last sentence under the research and education park overlay, is that to allow the fire station devastation there?
Chair Mitchell, Commissioner Hutchinson, yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, we were talking over here, this is the first of two public hearings. The second public hearing is August 9 at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter.
Okay, yes. Sorry about that.
I think that's right. This is the first of two. We have to announce the second public hearing, which is August 9.
Which you just did.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I listed it as July 19.
Oh, is that, is that what you have advertised?
I was planning on running the advertisement on July 19 if we have to do it.
Yeah, the agenda item says August 9, so.
My apologies.
So it's July 19 at-
July 19 at 9:00 a.m. or as soon thereafter as may be heard. Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that for the mix-up.
Any other questions?
We close the public hearing.
Again, this is a public hearing. I thought I closed it, but my compadre on my-
Mr. Chairman, move approval, staff recommendation to the second hearing on July 19 at 6:00 p.m. or soon thereafter.
9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m., I'm sorry.
Or soon thereafter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries to carry it on to the second public hearing on July 19 at 9:00 a.m. or soon thereafter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to number 10.
Maité Santa Maria, Director of Planning and Development Services for the record. And tonight, I will be presenting Agenda Item 9B10, which is a proposed land development code amendment. So the item before you was noticed on June 23 as required by the land development code. And this item is a county-initiated text amendment to amend the floodplain management-related regulations, updating the elevation requirements for manufactured or mobile homes, and providing criteria for non-elevated accessory structures. Overall, the purpose of the amendment is to reduce future flood damage and risk, maintain the county's community rating system score and associated flood discounts. And this is a program that we participate in, that is a voluntary program, where if we do things that exceed the minimum, we get discounts for our residents. Additionally, this is to comply with FEMA policy and state guidance, improve resilience, and enhance public health, safety, and welfare. The first portion of the amendment creates criteria to allow accessory structures to be placed below flood elevation requirements, allowing wet floodproofing in lieu of elevation and dry floodproofing. And this is to comply with FEMA policy and state guidance that is noted there at the bottom of the screen that was issued about a year ago. And it requires that we meet certain standards for flood openings, elevation, size, anchoring, and flood-resistant, excuse me, flood damage-resistant materials. The second portion of the amendment updates the elevation requirements of manufactured homes to require that the structures be elevated so the bottom of the frame is at or above the base flood elevation plus one foot. This is the same requirement that's in the Florida Building Code for all other homes, so any other site-built home, whatever other style, non-manufactured, has to be elevated to the standard. And the manufactured home would be placed on the same criteria and elevation so that they have the same level of safety associated with them. And this amendment, again, is proposed to satisfy the requirements of the NFIP Community Rating System Program. To go over a little bit of this background, the NFIP is a national flood insurance program, which provides federally subsidized flood damage insurance provided by FEMA to communities that adopt and enforce floodplain management regulations that meet the federal standards. And we have to do that so that we stay in good standing and that we have flood insurance in our community. Additionally, the community rating system is that additional voluntary program where if you exceed those standards, you get scores and ratings. The scores range from nine to one. The lower the score, the higher the discounts, and those discounts range from 5% to 45%. The county is currently a Class 6, which affords our community a 20% discount. And you can see there at the bottom of the screen on the left-hand side, in 2021, the federal program changed their criteria for the CRS program, which requires the elevation of the manufactured homes and all other homes to be the same. And if we don't do that, we revert back to a Class 9, which drops us to a 5% discount versus the 20% discount. On the left-hand side of your screen, you can see on the table, our current CRS class rating six, again, is that 20%. It's an average savings of $45 per policy. And if we drop to a Class 9, it goes to a 5% discount, which drops to a $12 savings. We are in a three-year cycle of being reviewed by, in this program, and our current, our next review is this fall. So if we do not change our code to be compliant with the standard, you can see the estimate of the change between now and our next rating, we'd lose out in about $1.1 million worth of savings to our policyholders. And there are about 8,900 policyholders within this county with federal flood insurance. So again, we are proposing these amendments to reduce future flood risk and damage, and to save our policyholders in the county by maintaining our current CRS score and maintaining the 20% discount, again, to enhance overall public health, safety, and welfare. And with that, staff is recommending that the board schedule this for the next public hearing, which would be the July 19 at 9:00 a.m. or soon thereafter meeting.
Any questions of Maité?
Mr. Chair, sorry, guys, but I have a meeting scheduled with you, I think, next week or the week after, regarding accessory structures. You know, we're talking about how do we, how do we find additional housing for people, whether it's, you know, low-cost housing for attainable housing, et cetera. There are manufacturers out there now that are working on the cargo container structures or 20-by-8, something like that, and they're self-contained. But their, folks are going to come in and have a conversation with you about that. It's a cargo container. It's not a manufactured home, per se. How would that fall into, and again, it's a new structure, it's a new type of thing. It's a, Florida statute just came out with, it's like 163-point-something regarding these types of new structures as a accessory structure.
So thank you, Commissioner, yes. That statute is about the accessory residential units, which don't necessarily have to be a cargo container, it's just smaller units accessory to a principal single-family house. Any cargo container, site-built home, stick, concrete, whatever it is, would have to meet the Florida Building Code. So they would have to comply with any of the standards there, and the Florida Building Code has the same elevation standards and the same flood level protection.
So the accessory would fall in line?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So elevate to the baseline plus a foot.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Commissioner Zadovsky, second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just to clarify, that was to proceed to the second-
On July 19, which at 9:00 a.m. or soon thereafter.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to C1, Public Safety Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity Needs Analysis. Analysis.
Karen Kozak, Emergency Management Safety Planner, so good evening, Chair Mitchell, members of the board. Also with me this evening is Public Safety Director Ron Guerrero as well, and we are going to be speaking on the 9C1, the Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity. Looking for the presentation here real quick, and I don't see it titled appropriately. So what we're going to discuss this evening is to deliberate whether to issue a notice for the submission of new COPCN applications and as a certificate of public convenience and necessity. I'm just going to touch on the ordinance requirements and reporting, also going to discuss the two surveys that were conducted, survey considerations, and also the local EMS programs that we have in the county, and also finally, the recommendation that we have for that. The ordinance is under Chapter 18, Article 3, and that is where we do find the information regarding the COPCN. To start with, just a little bit of background on this, Section 18-51 is a classification of certificates, so Class A is our Advanced Life Support and Basic Life Support Services, and that is essentially our 911 pre-hospital emergency response and emergency transports to the emergency room. We only have one provider in the county, which is the San Luis County Fire District. Class B, Advanced Life Support and Basic Life Support, non-emergency inter-facility medical transport, we have four providers in the county. Cleveland Clinic is, they service only their internal campuses only. Class F is non-medical wheelchair transport, we have a total of 11 providers within the county. These are not all of the classes that are identified in the ordinance, however, for this evening, we will be focused on Class B and Class F. Section 18-59 does require our current certificate holders to submit a couple of things on a monthly basis. One of those is the number of run reports, runs that they did conduct within the month, and also on top of that, the number of trucks that they do have servicing the county as well. So what I do want to point out is for Class B BLS calls from January through May, we averaged 3,104 calls total, that averages out to about 620 calls per month. Class B ALS calls, again, from January through May, a total of 3,173 calls were, transports were conducted, and that averages out to about 634 calls a month. Total number of trucks for Class B that we do have servicing our community at this time is a total of 32 trucks, 20 of those is all county-American and united, Cleveland has a total of 12 trucks that do service our community. Also for Class F, our wheelchair providers, they do have to report as well. Average of about 4,000 calls per month is being averaged for services that are being provided within our county, and for the number of vehicles, MV transportation, you'll notice, has a higher number, they have a total of 52 trucks that do service our county, and they are the contracted county provider at this time. All of the other agencies have, ranging from either 20 trucks down to one truck. Section 18-63 of the ordinance does have parameters that does outline for written complaint to be submitted to the Public Safety Director. We did create an electronic customer service feedback form last year, a total of 14 customer feedback forms have been submitted, 12 of those were complaints, two of those were suggestions. Timeliness and professionalism were the primary topics, however, they were not the only topics, but those were the primary topics. For those 14, we were able to reach back out to the submitter of the feedback form and to gain a stronger understanding of those particular circumstances that did surround the reason why that feedback form was initially submitted. I'm going to get into a little bit of information on the survey at this point. So we do have a survey that was conducted, there are certain parameters that are associated with that, that is outlined in the ordinance, and with that, I'll read the background to you at this time. According to San Luis County Code, Article 3, Life Support Services, Chapter 18, Section 18-52B, on or before May 1st of each year, the Public Safety Director shall conduct a need survey to determine whether there exists a need for additional life support services in the county. Following the conclusion of the survey, the Public Safety Director shall recommend to the Board of County Commissioners whether to issue a notice for that submission of new COPCN applications. If the Board determines to issue such notice, such public notice of the application period for COPCN shall be given by the county no earlier than July 1. The notice shall state that the Board will be accepting applications for all classes of COPCNs within the county. Completed applications shall be submitted to the Public Safety Director no earlier than September 1 and no later than September 30. So we did have two surveys that were conducted, and these two surveys, I'm going to go into, to start with. The first survey was focused on hospitals and hospice facilities. An email invite was sent out one day in advance on April 18th, platform utilized was Survey Monkey, and approximate time to complete the survey was 10 minutes. Invites were the three hospitals and three hospice facilities, all located within St. Lucie County. Hospitals were initially contacted on April 12th to simply identify participants, and what the intent was that, was the intent associated with that is between the various floors, ICU, the ER, there may be different experiences associated with scheduling transfers at that time, so we did want to identify the various participants to provide a very well-rounded aspect of what was going on. For the 15 participants, I'm sorry, 15 invites, we had six respondents that actually participated in the survey, which was 40%. April 19th through May 1st was 13 days that this survey was open, a total of five reminders were sent. So we'll go into the survey, and again, this was for our hospital and hospice facilities. Does your facility utilize a non-emergency medical ambulance transportation provider? Five out of the six respondents answered yes. Does your facility utilize a non-emergency, non-medical wheelchair transportation service? Again, five out of the six respondents answered yes. If your facility does utilize a non-emergency medical ambulance transportation provider, please select all of the providers utilized from the list below. All of our providers are being utilized, Port San Luis Volunteer Ambulance was the only one that is not being utilized within the hospital and hospice facilities at this time. If your facility does utilize a non-emergency, non-medical wheelchair transportation service from the list below, please select all of the providers utilized. So we've been with our hospitals and hospices, they are engaging in utilizing our wheelchair service providers that we do have within the county. What services does your agency utilize when transporting from the list below? Please select or check all that apply. All of the services that our providers are providing are being utilized, wheelchair, wheelchair with oxygen capabilities, basic life support, advanced life support, critical care, and pediatric infant. Non-emergency medical transport is needed multiple times daily. Five of the respondents strongly agreed with that statement, and then one agreed with that statement. On average, approximately, how many times per day does your facility or department request a non-emergency medical transport ambulance with basic and/or advanced life support capabilities? One respondent said five times, the second one replied 30, the third one 10, fourth was 15, and the fifth one was eight to 10 times today. So we're utilizing our services in a range between five to 30 times per day for these facilities that responded. Time availability. Using the scale provided, when scheduling non-emergency medical transport services, time availability is realistic and appropriate to meet patient care goals. Two of those agreed, we had two that disagreed, and we had two that strongly disagreed with that statement. When scheduling a non-emergent medical transport greater than one hour is acceptable, are there specific timeframes that represent challenges to your organization? They all identified that weekday, weekend mornings are all challenges, however, there was definitely more of a challenge identified with our afternoon and nighttime hours. When scheduling an emergent medical transport within one hour, are there specific timeframes that represent challenges to your organization? Select all that apply. Again, there appears to be challenges throughout all timeframes, we do have a spike with more challenging times being identified as in the afternoon and nighttime hours for scheduling Has your facility experienced unreasonable delays in the arrival of an ambulance after the time has been scheduled? Five out of the six did respond with yes. If answered yes to question 13, please select the most frequent time delay from the list provided. A little bit diverse here, one did select a one hour by lesson two, one selected two hours by lesson three, however, four did identify greater than three hours. Using the scale provided, how common are unreasonable delays experienced by your facility or department? 33%, which is two of them, identified daily, two identified several times a week, one identified several times a month, and one identified several times a year. Professionalism, non-transport. Using the scale provided, please rate the professionalism of non-transport staff, this includes all non-medical personnel, to include billing, dispatchers, and any of the representatives of the transport agency. Three identified somewhat satisfied, two said uncertain, one said dissatisfied. Are needs being met? Using the scale provided, please rate if your non-emergency medical transportation needs are being met. Two identified somewhat satisfied, one uncertain, one dissatisfied, two very dissatisfied. Using the scale provided, based on your facility's experience with utilization of St. Lucie COPCN agencies, there is a necessity for additional non-emergency medical services within St. Lucie County. Five of the respondents identified strongly agree, one of the respondents identified with agree. So that was a survey that was sent out to the hospitals and hospices within St. Lucie County. This other survey was targeted to our nursing homes, assisted living facilities, ambulatory surgical centers, adult daycare centers, and substance abuse mental health hospitals. The secondary survey was simply created to identify utilization of these services by other healthcare agencies and facilities that we do have within the county. It's a little bit of a lighter survey because simply it was just to ascertain, are they utilizing these services that we do have available to them? Survey method was conducted the same way, Survey Monkey, an email invite was sent one day in advance, and approximate time to complete this survey was four minutes. Facilities targeted, like I've already mentioned, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, adult daycare centers, ambulatory surgical centers, substance abuse, mental health hospitals. Timeframe, April 19th through May 1. Participants, we had 83 invites, 24 participated in the survey, so almost a 29% participation rate. Again, five reminders were sent out to these facilities as well to encourage participation in the survey. Facility representation, we had one from the adult daycare center, three from the ambulatory surgical center, 14 from assisted living facilities, five from nursing homes, and one from the substance abuse mental health hospital. Does your facility utilize a non-emergency medical ambulance transportation provider? Six of those answered yes, 18 answered no, however, what we did identify is that there are these other healthcare facilities that are utilizing these providers that we have in the county. Does your facility utilize a non-emergency, non-medical wheelchair transportation service? 33% answered yes, and the other 16, which is 66% answered no. If your facility does utilize a non-emergency medical ambulance transportation provider, please select all of the providers utilized from the list below. All of them are being engaged and utilized except for Cleveland Clinic, which I had identified previously, they only service their internal campuses. If your facility does utilize a non-emergency, non-medical wheelchair transportation service from the list below, please select all of the providers utilized. Most of our providers are being utilized by these facilities to conduct some form of wheelchair transportation service. What services does your agency utilize when transporting from the list below? Check all that apply. Wheelchair, wheelchair with oxygen capabilities, advanced life support, basic life support, critical care, were the ones that were selected. No services needed, 50% said that no services were needed, and none selected pediatric Non-emergency medical transportation is needed multiple times daily. Three of those strongly agreed with that statement, three agreed with it, one was uncertain, two disagreed with it, 15 strongly disagreed with that statement. Non-emergency, non-medical wheelchair transportation is needed multiple times daily. We had three strongly agree, two agreed, one was uncertain, three disagreed, we had 15 strongly disagree with that statement. So those were the two surveys that were conducted. Again, we targeted the hospitals and hospice facilities, and on top of that, we also did target the other healthcare facilities as well. With the hospital, hospice facilities, we had a 40% participation rate, the other facilities, we had a 20, almost a 29% response rate, data trends were still noted even with the limited response. So just circling back around to the hospital and hospice survey, the scale provided, based on your facility's experience with utilization of the St. Lucie COPCN agencies, there is a need for additional non-emergency medical services within the county. Five of those respondents did agree with that statement, one agreed with the statement. With the secondary survey that did target our assisted living facilities, nursing homes, adult daycare facilities, non-emergency medical transport is needed multiple times daily, we had 62% indicated that they strongly disagreed with that statement. And again, continuing on with that secondary survey, non-emergency, non-medical wheelchair transportation is needed multiple times daily, we had 62% that disagreed with that statement. The other thing that I did want to bring back to you for information, particularly after our last presentation, was our EMS programs that we do have within St. Lucie County. We have two programs within the county, Indian River State College and Treasure Coast Medical Institute. They both offer the Emergency Medical Technician Program and the Paramedic Program. Indian River State College EMT Program outcomes, this is for the actual pass rate of the National Registry State Licensor Exam, five-year average pass rate on the first attempt is at 83%. For the EMT Program employment rate, there was no data available on this, and this is data that I did receive directly from Indian River State College, the EMS Program Director did supply this information. For the Paramedic Program, National Registry State Licensor Pass Rates, three-year average, 69%, and employment rate, 100% all three years. For Treasure Coast Medical Institute, their National Registry State Licensor Pass Rate for the three-year average was at 90%, and for their unemployment, sorry, for their employment rate, three-year average of a 70% employment rate. Paramedic Program outcomes, pass rates for National Registry State Licensor Exam, 81% pass rate first attempt, and then their placement rate's 100% as well for those. So those are just a couple of the considerations that I wanted to present to you in light of the survey as well, and also on top of that, I'm presenting to you what the agencies are providing to us on a monthly basis. With that being stated, the previous action in regards to this agenda request, 9C1, is on May 24th, 2022, the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council unanimously recommended that new COPCN applications be accepted based on the recommendation analysis presented by the Public Safety Department. Recommendation, the staff recommends that the Board issue a notice for the submission of new COPCN applications in accordance with the recommendation of the Public Safety Director. Additionally, what I also would like to make a recommendation on is in consideration of conducting this type of survey moving forward annually, and on top of that, based on the conversations that, you know, just even hearing this evening in regards to the county's growth, urban development, the demographics, growth in the healthcare system, as well in this area, would really like for you to consider and consider approving and recommending that we have the ability to do an ordinance update to this. This ordinance is very dated, it's been quite a few years since this ordinance was truly touched at the depth that it needs to be touched for us to be able to conduct a survey that supports the type of demand that is occurring in this county right now, so I do appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you. Open for questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, what criteria is used to create the survey? Is there a national survey process, or is this just sit in a room and folks are part of the medical or transportation system, create the questions, or what criteria is used when creating the survey?
So when you look at a lot of the counties, the county ordinances throughout this state, each county is unique. each county is unique and diverse in the way the ordinance is written, the requirements that are written, and the parameters that are associated with that. So the surveys, when they are conducted, is going to be based, essentially based on what is that ordinance outlining in that, and that's how they should look at that. Now also, could there be other additional feedback or contributing factors that may be elements for creating those surveys for the other counties? Probably so. So for us, we have a blank slate originally when it comes to conducting these surveys. Historically, when you look at how surveys were conducted previously, it was really put on that applicant to conduct the surveys and say, is there a need for this county? And that applicant was really bringing in those responses. So for us at this point moving forward, and I know that is something that we've worked on in the last few years, is for us to create a very relevant, unbiased, impartial survey to, for us to be able to ascertain what are the needs that we have within this county for our healthcare facilities.
Well, having the applicant seems a little...
Yeah, I would agree with you.
But, and then I guess my next question, since we've done this just recently, actually during the pandemic and the shoulder of the pandemic, is I know that we had a serious issue with EMTs and paramedics and availability of staffing. Did IRSC or Kaiser or the other EMT provider educator give you any indication of how many people have graduated since the last time we did this? Is it 10? Is it 20? Because I know that, I sit on the fire district as well, and we have hired, I'm going to say, 46 new paramedics, firefighter, paramedic, EMTs, and so we are taking up as many of the graduates as possible at the fire district. So, you know, there's certainly be a concern, last we talked, is having available certified paramedic or EMTs to manage these types of runs.
So when I have spoken with obviously both of those agencies, and what they have expressed to me is their students that they're aware of is not having problems finding jobs. Some of the students are choosing to stay in school and continue their education, either to go directly into the paramedic program, or looking to do nursing, or physician assistant, or something like that. So when you look at these numbers, that is definitely something to have as a consideration as well, is when they are completing, their placement rate doesn't automatically mean it's a placement rate with a private ambulance provider here within the county, it doesn't automatically mean that it's with the fire district either. It could essentially mean that maybe their employment, placement rate is within a hospital or some other healthcare facility as well. And the paramedic program, it's a year-long program essentially, so with the data, they start in the fall, they won't graduate until the following spring or summer, and then for the EMT, it's a semester-long program, so that's a four-month-long program there. But did they give me specific numbers since January of this year that the last time we had this conversation? No.
All right, because I know when we had this conversation last, it was concerned that it would dilute the market if another provider came in, and then, you know, people that may or may not like who they work for, they jump ship, and now you've diluted the market, and so you may have an additional provider, but then you don't have the people to staff it.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's all my questions for now, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Kozak?
A couple things.
Go ahead, Commissioner Arts.
So Karen, thank you. Good presentation. We had a little chance to talk. You know that I still feel that we're not quite there yet. I still think that we are getting over that issue with employment. I also talked to you about the survey and how I feel that it's very, very subjective, and we're not collecting any data from them to actually know. And when you get to that subjective, you're looking at a survey that's being answered by six entities. When I look at it, I see actually one from HCA, even though there's two, one from Cleveland Clinic, even though there's two, but I do see two from the individual hospice. So I, again, they're not giving us any data that comes with that information. I don't know that we know who is inputting that information, and I think that's important. And I think that we don't know what, whether there's criteria saying, hey, you know, what are the response times, and what response times are acceptable in what situation? And as you said, our ordinance is very old, and I think that we possibly need to either talk about it at an informal, I think that you're working on it, and every time, it's you're trying to do a little more, but I think we have a long way to go. And I, again, I think the staffing shortage still exists, hopefully not as bad as it was the last time they came in, but I still don't want to dilute the market. And, you know, I believe in free enterprise and competition and all of that, but we've gone through some unique circumstances over the last couple of years. I just, for me, and me only, I'm not ready to go with another service without us really looking at that survey, getting that ordinance tightened up with the information that we need. And I don't know that you're looking at this, I'm sure you are, but what are other counties doing? How are they handling it? I mean, we have a lot to compare to. So to take a look at that and really try to tighten that up, I think is going to be, for me, the way to go. And so I can feel comfortable in saying, oh yeah, that's what I'm seeing is all data-driven, this is what we're looking for, what are response times, what should they be, where is the satisfaction level truly? I mean, when I'm looking at these numbers, my first is 66%, 83%, and then you look and you go, yeah, it's two.
Yeah.
It's three, it's one. So I think that that all has to be taken into account. So for me tonight, I'm not going to support this, but thank you for all your work, and I know that you got, I know you're working on more, because every time you do this, you bring more things back to us and better. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Ms. Kozak? This is a, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience like to speak on the subject matter?
Good evening, County Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, good evening, County Commission. My name is Raul Rodriguez. I am the CEO and founder of National Health Transport. I'd like to take, start off by saying thank you for the opportunity to present in front of you in such an important subject matter, the transportation of your constituents' lives. The issue's not, we're not here in logistics, we don't do transportation for dropping off packages, we transport everyday people's lives, every day, making sure that they get to their destination on time. I started NSD for a simple reason, it was to transport my dad. Unfortunately, he passed away shortly after, but to this day, 12 years later, I'm here honoring him by growing our company county by county. I started off with one vehicle, and now I'm over 100 with over 40,000 transports a year with over 300 employees and growing. But the interesting part about this is we've been able to grow organically, not by purchasing other companies, not by purchasing other things, we have grown organically and by word of mouth. That shows a testament of who we are. Each of us has selected, each of you have selected a member to join that EMS council. You trust them, you vouch for them, and you appointed them to that EMS council. All of them have unanimously suggested for you to open up that application and to bring in more providers, all of them unanimously. You've created a survey. That survey, there are six applicants that is relevant to us, what we do. Yes, there's six applicants, I mean, six participants in that survey, but that's 90% of our call volume, and this is what we do. So those six applicants, even though you're saying there's more, 90% of our call volume is based on those six applicants. That's the important number that you should be considering. To give you some more data, in these three counties, Mark County, there are four providers, Okeechobee, there are five providers, Indian River, there's four providers. And just to make a clarification, here in St. Lucy, there are two providers, one provider, which is Cleveland Clinic, and the other three is owned by one company. Let's just make sure we, I just wanted to clarify that data. In regards to shortages of employees, I am looking forward to going to universities and colleges in the area. Just to give you an idea, there's two schools in the Treasure Coast area that are graduating a class of 165 EMTs with 61 paramedics. Those are numbers. We've spoken about before with Indeed, there are already EMTs and paramedics that are looking to go and move around and move to this county to be able to work in your county. Your county is growing in population. In 2010, you were at 277,000 residents, now you're close to 350,000. But not only with that, you also have the healthcare facilities, for example, Tenet that is opening a new facility off of Becker Road. You include the aging population in that, that is why you have your EMS council recommending for you to give us an opportunity to provide more service. And you also have the healthcare facilities wanting to open more healthcare facilities in your county. If I'm allowed to open in your community, not only do you gain a provider, but you gain a partner. When I come into the community, my goal is not just to provide service for transportation, but also to help in community events, also to expand the foundation, also to feed the people, feed the homeless, and give these children, some underprivileged children, the opportunity to have somewhere to go to and to keep them off the street. I'd like to end the presentation by saying thank you to the commission, and more importantly, thank you to the staff for all your hard work in preparing the survey and ensuring that there is a need. Thank you very much, and have a great evening. Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else from the public like to speak on the subject matter?
Commissioners, good evening. Charles Maiman for All County Ambulance. I would like to just start out with talking about education. Commissioner Sodowsky mentioned the shoulder of the pandemic and the pandemic itself. So we at All County Ambulance, last two weeks ago, sent a check to IRSC, the foundation, we're dealing with Sherry Mons, who is at the foundation, to, in August, enroll eight students who are our employees. This week, we're sending another check for another eight employees. So in the August class, All County Ambulance will have at IRSC 16 students, and we may get up to 20, because we're still working on it, who are all Indian River, I'm sorry, Indian River, St. Lucy County residents. It has been difficult through the pandemic, and I can certainly appreciate some of the comments from the dais. I would be the last person to stand up here and tell you that our service has been stellar through the pandemic. Six months ago, in December, when we came before the commission, one of the commissioners asked a question, and the question was, how many complaints have there been about this service? And staff's response to that was one. I want to tell you that All County Ambulance has been serving St. Lucy County since the year 2000, and I've been involved with the company since 2005. Since 2005, if staff went back, I don't think, you know, pre-pandemic, they could find 10 complaints over 20 years. I doubt it. It just never happened. Our service was timely, we're a good service, we've provided for this community for over 20 years. It has been a slow turnaround process. I do want to tell you that today, this week, for the last six to eight weeks, we've been getting 27 ambulances a day on the road. That is three ambulances a day more than pre-pandemic. We have, we're hiring, we're working hard at it. You know, you all are asking great questions about school, and how many people are graduating, and what has the impact been? I think one of the great questions that we should ask, because I'm certainly part of the EMS community here in the survey, is we should turn to the state of Florida and find out how many new EMTs and paramedics they're actually licensing. And if you ask the state of Florida that question, it's mind-numbing from two years ago. It is down 88%. That's the state of Florida. Forget about what's happening on a local basis. That's just licenses, because you can't work as an EMT or a paramedic in the state of Florida without a state license. You have to pass their test. If you, if you look at it on a local basis, I will tell you, we've spoken with the folks at Treasure Coast, we've spoken with IRSC, and yes, they do have enrollment, but it's new enrollment. And we're helping to fill those classes and doing everything that we can to recruit. We're getting our ambulances on the road. As it relates to the survey, well, let me hold up on that for one second. I want to make mention of the fact that two weeks ago today, we had a, we have every once a month, we have a call with Longwood Regional Medical Center, it's a monthly call, it's been going on for over a year now. It started as a result of the pandemic. And two weeks ago today, we had a call that looks back at the last 30 days, and on that call, not one issue, nothing from the prior 30 days, and that was two weeks ago today. The, the survey is retrospective, and that's why I appreciate about the shoulder comment of COVID. We are, we are, you know, we're just coming out of it now, we're emerging from it. Staffing, again, has been difficult, but we're getting the job done, the job that All County Ambulance has done a great job at for 20-plus years. As for the survey itself, I, we just recently, very recently, got to actually look at the survey data and what was in the data and some of the comments. Question number 20, which is the last question in the survey. Cleveland Clinic filled out that survey, and they made a statement in there that said that Cleveland Clinic had arranged 12,647 transports in the year 2021. They went on to say that 3,474 of those transports were vended out to vendors outside of their own ambulance service. And lastly, they said that All County Ambulance only completed 10, 10 ALS and BLS transports. Now, we just recently got to look at the survey, and we're still looking at it and assessing it, but at the end of the day, when it's all said and done, that jumped out at me, commissioners, and the reason that jumped out at me is because it's just wrong. Here's the data, I'm going to give it to the recording secretary, so the- I'm going to give it to the recording secretary so that you each get a copy of it, at least as it relates to Cleveland Clinic. All County Ambulance in the year 2021 responded to 1,491 transports at Cleveland Clinic. Of those 1,491, 646 of them were directly requested by Cleveland Clinic. In other words, Cleveland Clinic called us and said, 646 times, can you do this? And we answered, yes, responded and treated and transported. The other, the other 845 transports from the 1491 were called in to us or requested by outside healthcare vendors. They may have been insurers, it may have been hospices, other healthcare entities. But I just have to bring this to your attention, because it's wrong. And we will share the data with you. By the way, I'm sharing data with you with redacted PHI, or the only information we're giving you is the 646 transports, the dates that they occurred, and that, the fact that they were picked up at Cleveland Clinic Hospital. I can't give you any more than that, because I can't give you patients' names, destinations, or anything else about those patients. So we're giving you redacted information. Lastly, I'm also going to provide you with a letter from Mr. Timothy Kimes, who is the administrator at Palms of Port St. Lucie Nursing and Rehab. It's a favor, it's a letter certainly in favor of us, but I just want to read to you from this, a portion of it. He's saying, "I'm not certain that an additional provider in the market will foster any efficiencies or consumer savings. Rather, the opposite may result, as another provider would be required to pay premiums for staff that are already difficult to hire and retain." I want to share, I want to tell you that I appreciate his sentiments. You should also know that, as a result of the pandemic, pay rates for EMTs and paramedics have risen significantly. And we have met that and will continue to meet it. If I'm putting 27 ambulances a day on the road, as the county continues to grow, we're committed to putting as many ambulances as necessary on the road to meet the demand. Happy to do it. We've done it for 20-plus years and look forward to continuing to do it. Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, before you go, if I may, okay? As part of the survey questions and so on and so forth, there was, there was some question as about the runtimes. Now, I was the chair of the Fire District in 2016, when we became accredited, and we had a dual path of ISO and accreditation. And so, is your industry controlled or monitored by ISO or accreditation processes?
No, no, sir, there is, Commissioner, there is no ISO. There, there are some agencies that do certifications for ambulance services, and within those agencies, the recommendations for response times. What I would say to you is this, you know, there was, Karen made a comment about the fact that the ordinance is outdated, it's seriously outdated. There are no metrics to measure us by in that ordinance, and there needs to be. We need to place metrics in the ordinance that everybody agrees upon, and I'll give you an example of that. An emergency response, say Lawnwood Regional calls for an ambulance, okay? Because they have a, a critical, well, Lawnwood's not a good example, but say St. Lucie Medical Center calls for a patient going to Lawnwood, and they have a critical patient in the ER, and it's a cardiac case. A reasonable, a, a reasonable response time, in my mind, that's employed in other counties, would be 20 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes for that response. That would be emergent. An urgent response, which is a patient that might need to go urgently, they're not emergent, but they need to move, might be 45 minutes. And anything beyond emergent and urgent usually is what's called scheduled, so it's an agreed-upon time, and those are discharges usually, they're not coming out of the ER or one of the critical care settings from the hospital. Those are just some metrics that are used in other counties.
Thank you for that, and I'm going to bring it back over here to Karen. So as part of the conversation, you know, and, and maybe this is a statewide thing, that we have to talk to our legislative delegation or ACHA, or I'm not sure who, what agency, Department of Health, whoever is the umbrella agency to provide the criteria for runtimes and so on and so forth, or maybe accreditation, et cetera, because it seems to me that, without some strong language or organizational structure on how to manage these types of situations, if 67 counties in the state of Florida are all doing it differently, we're not getting a, a, a strong pattern for the best possible outcome for the patients when it comes to runtimes and so on and so forth. So as, as this thing develops, if an ordinance comes through, I would like us to try and figure out, you know, what agencies, is it ACHA, is it Department of Health, is it some agency that, that provides some structure as to consistency throughout the entire 67 counties? Because we're not the only one.
Yes, sir, I'll reach out to MQA at the state and see where, where we can get guidance there as well. And also, I'd like to, I do have quite a few ordinances already pulled statewide that we can reference, and I'd like to create a working group internally within the county to maybe develop a standards that we see that would best suit our county with the agencies that we have here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Michaelaski, and I work for the Cleveland Clinic. I would just like to clarify the subset of data that Charlie pointed out. There's two different denominators there. So the data that was provided by the Cleveland Clinic, that is the data that's coming out of their centralized dispatch office. That information is going into our electronic health record, the EHR, which is Epic Hyperspace. It's actually the patient's chart, feeds a BI, Business Intelligence Data Aggregating System. It allows us to run very large reports quickly. When you have thousands of records, you have to be able to crunch the numbers, set filters, and have it run without crashing your system, so it feeds the ClickView system. The reason why the numbers are so different is because, at the Cleveland Clinic, we currently have two different processes for transportation. Transportation is either booked by the central dispatch office or by case managers directly. The dispatch office, as Charlie pointed out, with those three different intervals, you have patients that should never wait more than 20, patients that should never, he said 45, I say 60, we'll call it even, but that urgent class, we'll say an hour. And then you have the scheduled. 100% of the scheduled patients are scheduled by case management, and if we can compare our numbers, I'm fairly certain that that third class is the numbers there, and what the data from ClickView is reflective is really those urgent emergent patients.
Makes sense to me.
Any questions about the data that I can help with?
Don't think so.
My pleasure.
Any other? Here we come.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest if there's folks in the audience who are waiting to come up and speak, because we are now approaching the 11th hour, if you want to come up and queue up, that way we can kind of speed things up for us and get you out of here before midnight. Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
That's fine.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Renee Cross, and I am the Chief Financial Officer at Lawnwood Regional Medical Center. And I appreciate the opportunity to address our concerns for Lawnwood. We are an HCA facility, and HCA is very committed, not only to this community, but also to the county, with multiple hospitals, and we are currently in a phase of volume growth. We just expanded by 32 beds in our tower. We have commitment from HCA for funding to complete two more floors, another med-surg unit, an ICU unit. We're looking to expand our trauma center, add new service lines, and with all of this activity comes growth and increase in number of patients. I come from a manner of not protecting volume, but protecting our patients. We continue to also recruit physicians. Physicians bring more volume to the facility, and this drives a greater need for both inpatient and ED capacity. It is not uncommon for us to hold 30 or 40 patients in an ER. We hold as many patients in our ER as we have beds. Sometimes we can't, we don't have the resources to transfer those patients out, even to our own facilities, to our rehab program, to our behavioral health program. Those patients continue to wait in our facility and occupy space in our ED. When patients aren't transported timely, they continue to occupy space on our patient floors. It impacts the care, the timeliness of care that we give to the patient. We do have great relationships with the transport providers. We do meet with them routinely. And again, I come to you from a concern of our growth. We anticipate growth. We're committed to growth. We're committed to adding new programs to accommodate the growth in St. Lucie County. And we will always rise to meet that demand, but we, we have to make sure that we have the resources to do so and to provide our patients with quality care. We transport patients from our freestanding EDs to our main facility between commonly-owned facilities. We're testing and treatment may be targeted to one campus to avoid duplication of costly services. We transfer back and forth from our rehab site, behavioral health site, and from those sites for ancillary testing, a lot of back and forth. In terms of timeliness, you know, there's no cookie-cutter answer for what is an appropriate time for a transfer. It depends on a situation. If it's a burn situation, the longer that patient remains non-transported to a burn facility, the higher risk for infection. So each case is different, but when we have a need for transport, we have to have the ability to transport our patients and to enhance our throughput of patients as well. We currently experience delays in non-emergent transports, which, again, slows down our throughput and extends our length of stay. Opening the COPCN process for additional providers will allow more coverage and potentially more options. The bottom line is that we have to be able to accommodate the volume that we have and better serve the volume demands to ultimately meet the needs of our facility and our patients. And again, we're very committed to this community and to the county, and we want to ensure that we can continue to grow as the county grows and meet the needs of our, not only our county, but our patients as well. So thank you for listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Does anybody else in the public like to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. Adam Fetterman. I'm proud to represent All County Ambulance, and I will try to keep this brief, given the late hour. Appreciate your time this evening and your consideration of this very important issue. And I think that the clarification from Cleveland Clinic was very telling, because it's actually far more complicated than it appears on paper in the survey. So you have one snippet in a comment in the survey that is arguably wrong, based on the data that we have, and an explanation from the provider as to different pools of data from which the data is then pulled and then explained to you. But that doesn't come through in the comment on the survey. And I think that's really important here, because you're being asked to make a decision about whether or not to open the application process and allow a new provider into the marketplace without a full explanation of the data, and without all of the data that you need to make that decision. You know, staff has done an outstanding job with what they have to work with, with an outdated ordinance, but the ordinance does not set a single parameter for service in the county by an EMS provider. The ordinance does not set a single parameter for how the survey should be conducted, who it should be sent to, who the stakeholders are. You know, there's a huge population of stakeholders in this, they're never questioning the survey, patients in the community. Instead, we're asking potential competitors of the current operators to opine as to whether or not we should allow others in, yet we're never asking a question of the most important stakeholders, the patients in the community. It was mentioned that sometimes Lawnwood is holding patients in the ER, and I've been one, I've been held there, I know what it's like. We probably all have, we have a family member, pre-pandemic, during pandemic, and will be post-pandemic. And sometimes those are the very issues because of staffing considerations in hospitals, because of waiting for discharge papers. How many of you have ever waited for discharge papers, for hours and hours on end, right? And when the ambulance service shows up to transport a patient, sometimes they're held because of issues on the hospital side. None of that is, is reflected in the survey. And so, it, I, I think it's incumbent upon you to recognize that revisiting the survey by revisiting the ordinance, looking at examples, look, I believe in St. Lucie County exceptionalism, don't get me wrong, I genuinely do. We should have a survey and an ordinance that reflects what is special about St. Lucie County and St. Lucie County's needs. But that doesn't mean we need to reinvent the wheel. We can look at the other 66 county ordinances and see what's working there, where is there detail that we don't have detail, where and how are they gathering data that we are not gathering data? And then, once that is presented before you and incorporated into a survey, then you can make a real decision based on, not conjecture, not on subjective beliefs, not on opinions, and not on competition in the market, but rather based on black and white data before And that's all I've got for you tonight. Instead of rehashing other things that have been said, I appreciate your time, happy to answer any questions that you might have. We do ask that you would postpone opening the application process for COPCNs until you have an updated ordinance that reflects 2022, and a survey that has metrics and parameters that everyone can understand, follow, and provide you with the data you need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Does anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a question. Let's go down that road of a new ordinance and a new survey. What's the timeframe to get something like, I mean, I already know the answer, so, but you need to say it publicly. What is the timeframe to have to put all that together?
That's going to take us several months for us to...
And then it would come back before the board for public hearings and so forth?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're talking close to nine months, maybe the soonest?
I would say by the time we do the research, we communicate with the other stakeholders that we have within the county, and we put together something that's viable. And to bring it back to you, I'm going to say, let's be fair, and say, six months. I have done quite a bit of research in, in regards to other county ordinances, in regards to this. I mean, I can open up my backpack right now and pull out a handful of ordinances. So this is definitely something that I had already identified as a need that we did have. So I'm going to say realistically, let's put five to six months on it, if everything went really well, to get it back to you with an updated ordinance. And then on top of that, for us to can create another survey, that's going to be another couple of months.
And then I'm going to ask another question in regards to the fact that our Emergency Advisory Council actually unanimously voted to recommend that we go out. What was that based on?
The survey.
The survey itself?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that, did they have any discussion in regards to the content of the survey and/or the need for a new ordinance to help better look at that bigger picture that's being presented tonight?
There was some conversation in regards to the survey itself that did occur during the meeting. There was no conversation in regards to the ordinance that was presented or discussed at that meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I just have a couple of comments.
Okay.
A lot of them were addressed. I, I understand Adam's point of the data and the ordinance, but for me, I'm looking at, we're being asked, is there a need? We, we know that we need to change the ordinance. We know that that needs to be addressed yesterday. But just like we've heard from the hospitals, we've heard from Lawnwood, and we all know, we just got our census back, the county is growing. And in order to have competition... And in order to have competition, competition is healthy. And I guess my struggle is I look at Indian River, who is half the size, and they have four. I look at Martin County to the south, and they have, you know, four, half the size. And we're sitting here, we have four, but three of them are the same company. So I want to be able to give our residents opportunity, and I want to be able to stay ahead of the curb. I also know that most, you know, Chris, I'm surprised you didn't bring this up, but you can't even be a lifeguard anymore in the county unless you're an EMT. You have to be an EMT to be a lifeguard. So, but I have neighbors that have graduated here, EMTs, that have applied with the fire department and jobs here and cannot find jobs here. They're working out of the county. So they would love to be able to have a job being an EMT, staying right here in the county where they live. The workforce is getting back. It's not what it was, you know, pre the pandemic, but it is getting back. And I don't think that we really are having that issue anymore. There's graduates. I commend you because I also think it's, it's a good business decision, just like I know Lawnwood did it years ago, that in order to have people and obtain people, you offer them their education, they sign a contract, signing the contract, you pay their education, they have to work for you, and that's a guarantee. It's a very smart business decision. So you need to be commended for that. It's a, it's a good decision. But for me, I want to be able to give the opportunity to the residents. I want them to be able to have a choice. I think that there is enough business here with the hospitals, the other hospitals that are coming, with the additions to Lawnwood that we know that are coming. I'm comfortable in moving forward and letting another company have their, have the opportunity to come in. And I kind of feel the way you do a little bit, Franny, that, you know, maybe going back out and having that conversation with that board and rewriting the ordinance and everything, but I don't know that we really have nine to 10 months to wait on that. I know it's not even recent, it's not even pandemic. Prior to that, Lawnwood has struggled and St. Lucie West, they have struggled with beds. They have had people in the hallways waiting to get people admitted, waiting to get people discharged, waiting on services to come and get them out of the hallway so that they could admit somebody else. So I think the need is here. I think we have enough patients here. I think we have enough people being discharged. I'm comfortable in moving this forward and saying that it's time that we do open it up to having another opportunity for another business to do business here.
Mr. Chair. Karen, you had a graph there with the number of providers for the wheelchairs. Some of them are small mom and pops. Was there any indication as to, I saw even council on aging had zero transports for wheelchairs. Is that, is that commonplace now that, because they used to be significant in transports? And then if this opens up, does that change for those small, smaller providers, the mom and pops, if you will? Does that change that process and add more people in or applicants into that? Is it wide open? Does it become, you know, 20 participants, you know, want to get in for that side of the equation? Is that how that works?
Yes, sir. So that's a great point, and there's actually a couple of points that you did identify there. So when, I don't think I'm on the correct slide, but particularly when we're looking at our class Fs, our wheelchair service providers that we have within the county, there's a couple of things to keep in mind here is this survey was targeted towards the hospitals and hospices, and it was also targeted towards our other healthcare facilities within this company, healthcare providers within this company. When we start thinking wheelchair, we start thinking about our clients that are homebound, our citizens that are homebound, that aren't exactly any healthcare facility of any sort. So that is why some of these facilities are not identified as being utilized by these services, is simply because they're providers for our community, the citizens within our community. So that's where our wheelchair providers are. What I did find of interest with that secondary survey is we still have our ambulances, our Class Bs and our Class Fs that are still being utilized by all of our healthcare providers within this company or within the county. So that was the first thing to keep in mind. Now, the next question that was embedded in there that I heard was in regards to if we open up the application process, what does that look like? When you read the ordinance, it does specify the word "all," all COPCN applications. So that essentially to me, I'm not an attorney, so please forgive me here, but the way I read that is we're opening up all classes. So it would be Class B and Class F as well. So that is the reminder for me in regards to our Class F wheelchair providers that we have within this county. The other element of that that I have in mind is when we do open up applications, how many applicants will we get?
And what's the criteria of selecting?
Correct. That's where my other question lies.
Who makes that decision? The director or us?
There is nothing in the ordinance that defines that.
It's not in there.
Yes.
So a couple of things that have come through tonight, and number one is, and I, I would agree with the, the current operator, from a criteria standpoint, from a survey and so and so forth, there needs to be much greater scrutiny as to the structure of the survey, who it goes to. I would suggest too that there'd be, if an ordinance is coming through, that some criteria be made for runtimes and significant, and so if this umbrella agency, you gave me an acronym before, MT whatever, whatever.
MQA.
All right.
I believe that's just licensure for the state of Florida, but it's for our EMTs and paramedics within the state. And that's just simply one, one stopping point at the state level that we can reach out to. But again, what are the other counties defining, and Palm Beach County is one of those that does define times associated with emergent and non-emergent and those type of elements there in regards to times.
And I go back to accreditation of agencies that have a critical role to play in life, health, safety. So, so, you know, from that standpoint, I'd also suggest too that the, the current provider has had a 22-year, 21-year existence with the county, and, you know, somebody else wants to try and come in. My bigger concern here right now, and I'm not going to make everybody happy tonight, but the fact is, is that the one single criteria that I'm leaning on tonight, and I'm going to go back to the conversation we had last time, was we're coming out of the pandemic, we don't have the employees, maybe next year we should take a look at opening it up. And that actually came from you, sir. You said that statement right there. And so here we are a year later, where I think HCA just mentioned they added, what's 33 beds, 38 beds?
38.
Some number. Significant number. And we've also read that there's another hospital, I'm going to call it a boutique hospital, like to come to the south end of the county. Cleveland Clinic expands. So from that standpoint, the, the population of the county has exploded. We're not going to not be found going forward. This is going to continue. The recession that is upon us, the inflation side of things is upon us. We're not in the same place we were in 2007, eight, nine, in which the retraction or the contraction of our community with foreclosures and so, so forth. Having looked at how people have been purchasing property here, they're largely paying cash, they're not doing the, you know, no income verification mortgages. So we're in a better place. Our, our economy is in a much better place because this board and previous boards have identified manufacturing, intermodal distribution, and other types of processes to keep a, an annual economy as opposed to what we have is, I'm going to use the term failing citrus, only because of disease, not because of the folks that want to produce it. Tourism, tourism is strong, that's fine, but there's also opportunity for people to transport there. Our retirees and, and the rooftops, that was, that was pretty much our economy. Well, those retirees are coming, and they're, we're building what's Port St. Lucie and Tradition's building 25,000 units. They've got 45,000 units scheduled for the next 10 or 15 years. So, so my position tonight is not about the quality of service, not about the survey, it's about where we are today from a population standpoint, and, and that, it's going to take time to ramp up for any new provider. They're going to have to find a place to place the units, they're going to have to have a hiring process, they're going to have to acquire the, the units, et cetera, and they're going to have to set up shop. So tonight, I'm actually leaning to move toward opening that segment up simply for those reasons. The, the nuts and bolts of the survey and the criteria, that all has to get done. And I think that I, I really like to see us have an opportunity with the state to provide an umbrella process with regulatory components and criteria necessary.
Chris, I think that's the first time I've ever heard you say you want the state to take over our job.
No, no, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. What I said is to provide consistent criteria, criteria for regulatory components, that which we could expand on. So, but you're right, that doesn't come out of my mouth ever often. So that it says-
And she took the opportunity to remind you.
That's okay. But I, I am glad to support moving this forward tonight simply for those reasons that we have to be prepared for what, what our economy has become and what our population is becoming.
Mr. Chair, just so I can go back on a question that I had asked Karen. Dan reminded me there, we do have a system of how this judge, it may not be in the ordinance, but any of these applications would go before the advisory committee, and then they would, the staff would review them and so forth, and then a recommendation would come back to this board, and we would end up being the ones to decide. But that's not what tonight is. It's not deciding, it's whether or not do we open it up and is a need there. I'm concerned, as was already stated, on the, that's, you are being really optimistic when you sit there and tell me five and six months you can have it in front of us and we vote on it. I don't see it, I'm looking at more like nine months to a year of getting through it. And I don't think we have that time to wait on it, in all fairness. Not that I don't think you all do a good job, I think you do, but I think it's going to be, I'm going to want the input from not just staff, but the input from the outside agencies and so forth, because I can tell you, it can go both ways when we talk about discharging. You and I had this discussion this morning. A lot of times it's not the driver, there's issues on the backside at the hospitals and so forth that aren't getting taken into consideration when they go to do discharging. So we need to be fair about it in the criteria and stuff. So that's part of the survey part. There's got to be a criteria in that survey on how it's answered also, parameters, you know, maybe those need tightened up. But I would like to see that back as part, if there's a motion that goes on the table, I would ask the motion maker to at least include giving staff the direction to have that ordinance updated into us along with any survey recommendations that would come
Anybody else?
We've all spoke. Do you want to motion?
I'm just going to say one thing, and it has real, maybe more than one thing. I have a mom that's sitting in Lawnwood tonight, and she's in the emergency room, she's waiting for her room. Had nothing to do with her transport time or getting her there. We're a growing county, and you, we don't have the room. And that's not only at Lawnwood, I've had my mom in and out of a hospital for the last couple of years. We're growing, and there's no, there's people waiting out in the hallways, and it's not, I'm not blaming ambulances, I'm not blaming EMTs, paramedics, you, you all do your job. It's just that we're a growing community. But again, I'm going to say, I don't like the way our process is set up. We do definitely, we're not a rural county anymore. And to see the paperwork that I was handed, I was kind of taken back, saying this is, this is St. Lucie County, and we've got to do better than this. We've got to look. I, I was fortunate enough to look at three other counties where they have regulatory things in place. We've got to catch up with the times in this. And I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming anybody because I'm at fault too. I sit up here, I'm an elected official. I should have saw this before it came to light to me. So I'll just leave it at that, but that's what my two cents was.
And you can put a motion or whoever wants to make a motion, I'll entertain.
I'll, I'll make the motion, but before I do, I want to say again, I, I think we all are thankful that you have stayed with us for 20 years, and I think that you have a future in the next 20 years. I don't think this is about anything you've done wrong, it's just time for us to open it up and to be able to provide the services for our residents moving forward. So I'll make a motion to approve, and it will also, the motion will also be to update and revise the ordinance that has to be done immediately. And we need to come back at some point in time, I think, and have a conversation about, once that's revised, coming back with some more survey and data to be updated too also.
Will I have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Commissioner Bartz?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes.
We've already completed the administrative portion earlier.
I got to go to the bathroom.
So you want to take a five minute break?
Just five minutes, guys. I just got to hit the men's room real quick. Call the meeting back to order. We have 10B1, and that will be the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item will be handled by Joanne Riley, property acquisition manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Item 10B1 is a second addendum to a contract for sale and purchase. On March the 15th of this year, the board approved a contract for sale and purchase for property, county-owned property located at 2700 Industrial Avenue III, as shown in yellow, with a proposed purchase price of $1.5 million. The contract provided for a feasibility determination period to inspect the premises, including the roof and electrical services. During the 105-day feasibility determination period, the proposed purchaser, STB, engaged some various consulting firms and Anderson Andre to perform a Phase 1 environmental assessment. They are also recommending a Phase 2 environmental assessment to consist of some groundwater sampling and well testing. They also engaged whiting construction to inspect the roof and the electrical. The estimated costs of the repair to the roof, the roof decking and the electrical services exceed $700,000 pursuant to an email from STB on June 9 of 2022. On June 24th of 2022, STB presented county staff with a second addendum, a counteroffer in the amount of $1.25 million, given the repair cost of $700,000. The county did have this property appraised by Dan Fuller of Fuller Armfield &amp; Wagner, who valued the property at $1.5 million but was unaware of the condition of the roof, the roof decking and the electrical services. Had these facts been known, they would have negatively affected his opinion of value. Tonight's staff is recommending that the board approve the second addendum to the contract for sale and purchase and authorize the chair to sign the addendum and direct staff to proceed with the closing, recording the documents in the public records of St. Lucie County. If you have any questions, I'm available as well as Mr. Payne. We'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. This is in regards to the recommendation from Anderson in regards to the Phase 2 environmental assessment. Is that, have the ability to come back to us as a third addendum?
Madam Chair, the way the, or, excuse me.
Madam Vice Chair.
Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson, Chair Mitchell. The second addendum reads that if the Phase 2 comes back and there's something wrong with it, that they have the ability to walk away. So in my opinion, I do not believe there is an opportunity for a third addendum unless Mr. McIntyre thinks otherwise.
No, there would be, not, not on the face of the contract, that wouldn't prevent them from trying to come back and negotiate it, but it wouldn't be automatic. Their, their options are to go for it at the $1,250,000 or walk away.
Thank you.
Have a questions to staff.
Mr. Chair, just one. Who did the valuation for the roof and the, was that ours? Did we send it out or was it their people?
No, sir. It was their, their consultant and- It was their consultant and, let me just get that name again, I'm sorry, Whiting Construction. And I do believe that staff was aware that there were some roofing issues. You know, we did have a tenant in there for quite some time, as well as the, we had the animal shelter up there for quite some time, and I do believe Mr. Payne is aware that there were some minor roofing issues along with some minor electrical issues. We just didn't know the extent of those.
Mr. Chair, may I have approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
10C1.
Good evening again. Chair Mitchell, Commissioners, Corey Benton, Planning Manager for the record, presenting agenda item 10C1, a request from DLF Citrus for a traffic impact study waiver for a proposed expansion of their facility on Orange Avenue. They have petitions in for a major site plan adjustment and a conditional use adjustment to expand their citrus packing and processing facility located at the northeast corner of Graves Road and Orange Avenue, approximately a quarter mile west of Carter's Grocery, for context. As part of the application requirements, a facility of this scale would typically require a traffic impact study. The applicants are petitioning a waiver of that based upon a traffic statement that they've provided indicating nominal increase in trips generated from the facility because their expansion is to vertically integrate cold storage of citrus prior to processing and distribution, thus potentially limiting or reducing trips to and from the facility because they're able to handle more activities onsite without routing to other adjacent complementary cold storage facilities. Additionally, when they developed the site originally, they provided a westbound right turn lane serving the project and its sole access points on Graves Road, which Graves Road, other than serving DLF, only provides access to roughly two single-family homes. Therefore, in some, the traffic incurrence appears to be met. Our Development Review Committee and third-party traffic consultant are supporting the waiver this evening, and staff is recommending that the board accounting commissioners accept the waiver. We are anticipating to schedule the public hearings for, before the board in either August or September to bring the site plan and conditional use adjustment back.
We have approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything left, I believe, is Mr. Tipton?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we are beginning our budget workshops. They will start at 1 o'clock tomorrow afternoon at the Fenn Center, and they will be also held on Thursday, Friday, and then Monday and Tuesday next week if needed. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, actually informal meeting will be Tuesday, July 2nd. And we do have a special meeting of the board at 9:00 AM in Conference Room 3 to review the airport RFPs, and that will be on the 13th of July.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Hutchinson.
[applause]